Good evening, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley-Broom. We have a quorum present with Council members McKenzie, Karn, Arnold, and Gay. So at this time, I will call the meeting to order, subject to my continuing objections to ordinance 2024-01 and the omnibus motion that this council passed the first week of January in 2024. And so the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation will be done by Ms. Macrija Williams tonight.
Gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for your mercy and your continuous grace that you've shed upon us, Lord. We thank you for tonight and it become a meeting of the minds of the Mayor, City Council, and our leaders amongst our community, Lord God. We ask that you help bring clarity and let us all come aligned and we are all in one accord with the business of your will and the will of the people, Lord God. We ask that you continue to cover us. We thank you for the city. We thank you for what you've already done and how you've kept us all this time, oh God. We thank you for the shift and the atmosphere has changed, oh God. We thank you because we know that greater is coming and we know that the things that you've got in store for us is well underway. We thank you for the tone that's been set and we praise your name and we thank you because your will is about to be done and it's already in action. We thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name, and we know that you are and we will forever give you the praise and you're worthy to be praised in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, residents of College Park, I'm gonna bring forth to you your civility pledge, which reads, "The way we govern ourselves is often as important as the positions we take. Our collective decisions will be better when different views have had the opportunity to be fully vetted and considered. All people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy, and openness. We value all input. We commit to conduct ourselves at all times with civility and courtesy to each other." As we move forth this evening with this meeting, anybody who has signed up for public comment, when you come up to the podium, I ask that you please remember the civility pledge.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens, visitors. I'm Sterling Jones, your fire chief here to do a brief public safety announcement message. Know the exits. There are four clearly defined exits forward and rear of the City Council chambers. Please get an opportunity to know your exits. Use the exit quickly and efficiently in event the fire alarm goes off. Leave our personal belongings behind unless you can retrieve without delay. Please assist those with disabilities or mobility issues if it is safe to do so. Once outside, there are rally points that you can go and collect yourselves. Follow the College Park staff, go to the rally points, and stay there until you decide to come back into the facility. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Number two, additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda.
All right. Are there...
I actually have a change to the agenda. Number four, the council appointment, we just need to move that to the next meeting.
Okay, so 4A is removed?
And Mayor, I have one.
Yes, sir.
I would like to add a resolution of the City of College Park authorizing participation in an amicus brief.
In the Chang versus City of Milton appeal pending before the Georgia Supreme Court?
Yes.
All right, so we'll put that down and it will be the last thing that we consider. Let me... I've got a lot of pages here.
Question?
Give me one moment here. That would be 10 what? I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
I have a question on that before you add it.
I'm not adding it yet, I'm just trying to get the number it would be.
Madam Mayor, it looks like it would be 10M.
M as in Mary?
Yes, M as in Mary.
Okay, 10M. Mayor Potem?
Being that that addition is a matter of litigation, which was discussed in executive session, shouldn't that be... I would request that that would remain in executive session. And as you all know, I do not add things to the agenda, so if it does stay on the regular agenda, I will not be voting.
Mayor Potem, I will say that this is something that 66 other cities have considered, and I don't believe that they have gone into executive session in considering it, the resolution itself. And if it is, if there is consensus to add it to the regular agenda, then we will move forward in that manner.
That's fine. That's, I'm still, I'm responding, so...
Mayor Potem?
Yes. Basically, I just want to make it clear that my policy is that I do not agree with adding items to the agenda, especially if it's not something that is extremely time-sensitive, emergency in the city. So I would request that if it's got to be on the agenda, that it be added, that it will be placed on the agenda for August 4th.
To that, the sign-on actually is due August 4th, so there is a, it is time-sensitive. So it is something that would need to be addressed tonight. Councilmember Carr?
Well, I do have a suggestion. I did read the email and I got, and I understand there have been a few changes in terms of progress that's been made. I would just suggest, being that, you know, we have the set agenda, there may be a consensus in executive session where we can move forward with it, but I guess it is still technically litigation, but I'm not against necessarily coming on board with this brief here, but I think perhaps, you know, being that it is litigation, that's something we could tackle in executive session and then come out with a consensus on.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Denmark?
A couple of things. It's not litigation that involves the City of College Park, and so we're not in jeopardy in this matter. We're being asked to join in with fellow cities in a matter that involves the City of Milton, first and foremost, and that's up for you, good folks, to decide whether you want to do that or not. Secondarily, it's not a matter that must be discussed in executive session. You certainly could, if elected, to do so, but you're not obligated to discuss this matter in executive session.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I'm with Mayor Potem, and I don't like adding things. That's just not a policy, but because this is a, you know, government cooperative initiative, I'm just gonna go and make a motion that we add it.
Okay, it is being, it's part of the additions, deletions, or changes. I just want to make sure that Councilmember Karn has an opportunity. You wanted to say something?
Well, I was gonna say, we could accomplish the same thing, you know, if we do it in executive session, we could accomplish the same thing and it'd be a little cleaner than we didn't add to the agenda at the same time and still accomplish, you know, whatever the goal is or whatever the pleasure is of the body.
Mayor?
Mayor Potem?
And basically, I just wanted to be clear that I don't agree with adding the item to the agenda, and therefore I will be refraining from voting, I will abstain. However, I was looking for a way that it could be added within tonight's meeting. So I want people to understand that I, that it's not about the legislation itself, it is about the way that we are proceeding with adding an item to the agenda that even could require a special call meeting if it had to be done by August 4th, if we are trying to do things decently and in order.
All right. Any further discussion?
Again, I'm fine with the item.
Councilmember Carr?
I'm fine with the item, but if we did it in executive session, it'd just be cleaner. I think that would be not adding to the agenda too, but I, you know, things have changed and I'm not against it, but I think we can accomplish the same difference in executive session just as easily.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any other additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Denmark?
At consultation with the City Manager, I'm recommending that we remove item AG...
I'm sorry?
Item A, G as in golf.
Eight G?
No, A as in apple.
Oh.
G as in golf from the consent agenda.
Can you read that?
What item is it, sir?
Consent agenda. A, G.
On the regular agenda.
A, G on the consent agenda.
Right, it's about the FAA lease capital improvement.
Could you just read the whole thing out to make sure everybody's on the same page? Thank you.
Consideration of an action on a request to approve the FAA lease agreement for capital improvement expense, $3,669,898.
Okay, so that is, that is removed?
Yeah, to the next agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was, I'm getting some spotty pickups on the, on my PDF here. What is the number again?
A as in apple, G as in golf.
Oh, it is nine A G. Because it's part of the consent agenda.
Thanks.
Okay, all right, so, anything else?
One further comment, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Nine A D, I, it should reference the resolution that I just distributed that we just technically have to do a resolution.
Yes.
And it's very perfunctory, and I just want to make sure that we amend that portion to add that we are approving an agenda that allows us to allocate those TPD funds.
To approve a resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. So nine A D should include the approval of a resolution that we have in hand. All right, anything else? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
What are they?
I apologize, sir. So removal of 4A and nine A G, the addition of 10M as in Mary, a resolution of the City of College Park authorizing participation in an amicus brief in the Chang versus City of Milton case, and the addition of the approval of a resolution to nine A D. Correct? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Nay, rather.
Any extensions? Councilmember Karn, what is your vote?
Aye.
All right, so Councilmembers Karn, Arnold, and Gay are in favor. Councilmember McKenzie votes against, the motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, so Councilmembers Karn, Arnold, and Gay are in favor, Councilmember McKenzie is against, the motion passes. And we are, we have removed 4A?
Yep.
Next item, five, presentation of council, of city council minutes, 5A workshop session minutes dated June 16, 2025.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item 5B, regular session minutes dated June 16, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mayor Potem?
Packet page 121, my verbiage is missing for the, my council report because it was a video, but I do want the actual words that are said to be included in the packet because it, it looks like I had no council report. So I would like to, I'm requesting that the, whatever the wording was, be added to the minutes, please.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. With that amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Next agenda, item six, proclamations, resolutions, plaques, and announcements, 6A, introduction of new employees, month of June.
I would like to have all the new employees for the month of June to come up and introduce themselves and tell them, tell you what department they are in.
Officer Ivory Morris, College Park Police.
How you doing? Officer Michael Mefers, College Park Police.
Demont Turner, Water and Sewer.
Jerel Jones, Department Manager.
One, two, and three. Again, one, two, and three. Last time, one, two, and, so we got some smiling police officers, I like that.
Now for the employee of the month. This employee joined the City, City of College Park in February of 2023 and has consistently demonstrated dependability, positivity, and an unwavering dedication to service. He approaches every task with professionalism and composure, embodying the values we strive to uphold. He is a constant presence at community events and is always engaged, whether he's interacting with residents, assisting with event setup, or answering questions. He brings respect, humility, and genuine smile to every interaction. Not only is he committed to protecting our citizens, but he is also a steadfast guardian of our staff. His calm demeanor under pressure, coupled with his ability to handle challenging situations with grace, makes him an outstanding representative of the cops unit. Please join me in congratulating Officer Omari Lewis, our deputy officer of the month. Our world's biggest employee to recognize.
On three, one, two, and three. Again like that, one, two, and three. I may have to ask him to stop smiling. One, two, and three. Is that okay with you? Okay. Councilmember Gay, we'll go this way. Little bit more. Ready, go. On three, one, two, and three. Again, one, two, and three. There you go.
Item 6C is recognition of Lieutenant Ganji for promotion to Battalion Chief.
Did I pronounce that correctly? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Mary Council, my pre-surprise and my glad that Lieutenant, former Lieutenant Ganji has now been promoted to Battalion Chief. Lieutenant Ganji has proven themselves over the years, being an outstanding employee. He has volunteered, he's done more than his share of his primary duties, and this is our honor and privilege to be, stand here before you to recognize Battalion Chief Sal Ganji.
I just want to say thank you very much. It's a pleasure to serve our community. I've been here almost 25 years now, hook, line, and sinker now for a few more years, and I know on behalf of, I couldn't be here without my staff, and it's not, it's not a single person thing, so this is, this has been an honor. Chief, thank you.
Jeff, Chief, thank you. And I'm hoping to serve or protect you the best I can with my staff. God bless.
We got the tiniest, newest member of the annual year.
Chief, why don't you bring it down to this side right now? Yeah, yeah, just a little bit, just go this way, yes, a little bit, good. Councilmember Gang, Councilmember Arnold, right there, good. Back to your window there, and this way, perfect. All right, here we go, group, on three, one, two, and three. Again, one, two, and three. Last time, one, two, and three.
Item 6D will be heard at the August 6, pardon me, August 4th meeting. 6E is proclamation recognizing Mr. Thomas Wendell, presented by Councilman Roderick Gay.
So, visitors and family, this is Mr. Wendell, and actually, Mr. Wendell and I don't always see eye to eye. But he's getting this tonight because Mr. Wendell has been the general manager for the Family Dollar in Ward 4. And I guess you say, a Family Dollar, how is that significant? Well, a little bit of history is that Ward 4 had a grocery store years ago when we moved here in 98, and since then, we didn't have a retailer. But Mr. Wendell came and we actually bar carded the Family Dollar for about a year because we wanted a grocery store. But when Mr. Wendell came to the store, he demonstrated such a professionalism till he got to meet the community. And it was actually Coco Bright, one of the seniors in our community, who asked that we honor you, and I concur that you should be honored because he ran a good, good store. So this is a lot. You gave her all this? Here we go. Whereas Mr. Thomas Wendell has faithfully served the College Park community with professionalism and integrity, culminating in over eight years as the store manager of Family Dollar Store 1212249 located at 2461 A. Riverdale Road, College Park, Georgia 30337. Whereas Mr. Wendell began his tenure at the Family Dollar on September 8, 2018, and was appointed store manager on September 25, 2018, reporting to District 711, consistently upholding high standards in the store performance, shrink control, customer service, achieving status among the top 25 Family Dollars locations in the state of Georgia out of 2,800 stores nationwide. Whereas Mr. Wendell always valued and appreciated every one of his customers, he never took their loyalty for granted, recognizing that customers could choose to shop anywhere else but choose to support his store. He takes great pride in building relationships with patrons, earning their trust, and providing a welcome environment to all. And whereas Mr. Wendell retail leadership spans more than 45 years, including 30 years of service with Rite Aid, seven years with Family Dollar, and eight years with, eight years with the Dollar General, and eight years with Family Dollar, always a manager, in a managerial role, showing his enduring commitment to excellent in retail operation. And whereas Mr. Wendell is a proud graduate of Georgia State University, a dedicated deacon at the Ebenezer Baptist Church since 1968 during the passing of Dr. Marleth King, and a member of the Alpha Phi Alpha, that's why, since 1984. Whereas he is a native of Birmingham, Alabama, and a product of Decatur, Georgia, having attended...
Renata Park.
Renata Park, Decatur High School, and inspired the civil rights legends such as Hosea Williams. And whereas Mr. Wendell takes great pride in his personal mission to inspire positive change, provides passionate service, and shifts the mindset of customers and communities throughout, through consistency and care. And whereas Mr. Wendell retired on Saturday, June 7, alongside his beloved wife, Kim Wendell Thomas, a retired United States government, leaving a legacy of service, leadership, family value, and their three adult children, 10 grandchildren. And whereas his dedication to willingness, commitment to service, and leadership at Family Dollar reflects the very best of our city values, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park, Georgia, does hereby recognize Mr. Thomas Wendell for his outstanding service and contributions to the community, and extend to him the best wishes for his joyful and well-earned retirement, proclaiming his 21st day of July, 2025.
It's a big question. Thank you very much. It's okay, you have to run this back. Did you consider only the honors you?
Yes, I was.
You want to come down?
No.
Okay.
All right. Okay, group, on three, one, two, and three. Again, one, two, and three. Last time, one, two, and three.
Item 6F, proclamation honoring attorney Steve Fincher sponsored by Councilman Roderick Gay and Councilman Corn and presented by attorney Winston Denmark and firm.
Again, I'm Councilman Roderick Gay, and we co-sponsor this proclamation attorney Fincher. So Councilman McCorn, our lone serving councilman, myself, and then the city attorney is going to do a little something. But I just want to make a couple of quick comments. You know how you honor people when they gone, and you read their obituaries? So, I never told this to Mr. Fincher, but I just want to share this with his family, to the community, anyone who's here. So I joined council in 2015, and as part of course, there were some issues and there were some allegations which involved, and I don't want to get, but involved the district attorney. And quite naturally, I was concerned, but the moral of, the long or the short of it is, after all said and done, this gentleman met with the district attorney, and he didn't even have to represent me, he just told the truth. See, the truth will always set you free. And so what he don't realize is that he wasn't representing the city of College Park, he was just a man being a professional and doing what's right by another man. And so I just want to personally tell you that I appreciate you for that.
All right. Whereas Steve Fincher provided 40 years of exemplary legal services to the city of College Park from 1980 to 2020, contributing profoundly to the city's governance, growth, and physical well-being. And whereas Mr. Fincher's superior problem-solving ability, exceptional legal acumen, and unmatched institutional knowledge enabled the city to secure millions of dollars in perpetual revenues from Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport, ensuring a lasting physical legacy. And whereas he achieved precedent-setting legal victories, including the successful establishment of a citywide ban on strip clubs, thereby protecting the character and integrity of College Park's neighborhoods. And whereas Mr. Fincher served as a trusted counsel to multiple mayors, city council members and staff, offering wise and strategic guidance through complex legal, financial, and political matters. And whereas he played a key role in the development and legal structuring of the Gateway Center Campus, including the Georgia International Convention Center, the Consolidated Rent-A-Cost Facility, and the surrounding infrastructure vital to the city's continued development and economic expansion. And whereas Mr. Fincher's dedication, foresight, and deep understanding of municipal governance contributed to the city's success in ways that continue to serve its residents and shape its future. And whereas the city of College Park, on behalf of its elected leadership, staff and citizens wish to express its deepest gratitude to Steve Fincher for his extraordinary public service, now therefore be proclaimed by mayor and city council of the city of College Park, does hereby recognize attorney Steve Fincher emer, 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 emeritus, for, emeritus, excuse me, for his distinguished contributions and present, present this proclamation of appreciation as a lasting testament to his legacy of excellence and commitment to the people of College Park, proclaim this 21st day of July, 2025. Well deserved, Steve.
I know Steve has a couple of remarks that he would like to make, but I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and say that I'm your city attorney, but Steve Fincher sat in that chair for a lot of years, and he guided this city through a lot of difficult times, different mayors, different city council members, different department heads and city managers. And so we look around at College Park and we see things that we have that other cities wished they had, but you know, Steve Fincher and guys like Ed Wall, I mean, they, they had the cocktail napkins figuring out how to draw, drive this city forward. And so I was fortunate enough to join his firm in January of '04, and Steve has been a mentor to me, and if I'm worth anything as an attorney, it's largely because I, I watched Steve, I saw how he moved. A lot of times it wasn't direct words, do this, say that, it was observing how he moved, knowing when to talk, when not to talk, understanding the proper role of a city attorney, how to give good advice, how to mentor clients, put your arms around them and give them tough love when they needed to hear bad advice. And so I learned what I know about being a city attorney from Steve. And it's not just me, the lawyers in my firm, both of my law partners are mentored under Steve. Now if you look at law firms on the south side of Atlanta doing local government work, it's a pretty good chance that those lawyers came through Steve's firm. And so he's not just responsible for the success of College Park, but he could probably take credit for the success of a lot of communities on the south side of Atlanta. And so in addition to this proclamation that we're going to give to Steve, I think the council field that was fitting and appropriate to name the executive conference room after Steve. And so it'll be the Steve Fincher Executive Conference Room for here on out.
Thank you, Councilman Gay. Thank you, Councilman Corn and the councilmen. I appreciate the opportunity for you to be recognized like this. As Winston said, I started practicing law on April 15th, 1980. I remember it because it was tax day, which sounds like modern times to me, but that was 40 years or 45 years ago. The very first thing I worked on was an item for the city of College Park. And so I've been a big part of the city of College Park for all of my life. I went to Lake Shore High School, I grew up on Old National Highway, I married a woman who was grandfather was mayor of College Park. So College Park's been a huge part of my life. It's, it's been a great opportunity. We did some wonderful things. I worked with some wonderful people. Mayor Longinow, Ed Wall, Councilman Phillips, I could go on and on and name names that y'all have never heard before, but it was a lot of fun. And I had more kind words said about me tonight than I've ever heard in these chambers. As a matter, as a matter of fact, I think those were the first kind words that were ever said to me in the whole 40 years I was here, and I really do appreciate it, and I thank you for the honor.
Before we take pictures, I have another surprise for y'all. As many of y'all know, behind is the great man, everybody wants.
Yes.
And there's no way you will accomplish everything you accomplish without the love and support of the family, particularly your wife. So I would like to make another visitation to Mrs. Lee Fincher. Whereas Lee Fincher has demonstrated extensive dedication through volunteerism, civic leadership, public service, and whereas Ms. Fincher has led major local initiatives supporting youth programs and improve community welfare by among many accomplishments over 40 years, to numerous such as serving Arts Clayton in multiple positions, and ultimately as president. Serving in multiple leadership positions in the Clayton County Chamber of Commerce, leading three successful sale tax referendums for the Clayton County Board of Education, providing for the critical expansion of school infrastructure, holding municipal leadership positions on Lake Spivey Civic Association and Lake Spivey's Community Organization, personally mentoring county's young scholars in the Fincher-Denmark Internship Program, resulting in multiple successful careers for lawyers, paralegals, and other professionals. Serving as eager volunteers for the Countess Clayton County civic organizations, carrying on public service latency for her grandfather, Jay Howard Evans, who was College Park's city council member and ultimately mayor in the 1950s, and supporting her husband Steve Fincher in their 40-year presentation, representation of the city, sacrificing her time with whom she could fully focus on city affairs. Whereas Lee efforts have brought honor to the city of College Park to reflect the highest standards of citizenship. And whereas the mayor and council wished to formally acknowledge and honor Lee's achievement, now therefore be it proclaimed by Roderick Gay and the mayor and council, and the city of College Park do hereby recognize Mrs. Lee Fincher for her outstanding service and dedication to the community, proclaiming this 21st day of January, 2025.
All right, on three, group, one, two, and three. One, two, and three. Come on, Winston. Y'all go on back.
Item 6G is proclamation for College Park Favor Track presented by Director of Recreation and Cultural Arts, Michelle Johnson.
All right, now, you want to, you want to have your, all right, and all those folks who have been, who've got all that hardware, come on down. It sounds like Christmas. Yes, I'm good. I'm happy to read it, I'm happy to read it. I'm good, thank you, sir. She said for me to read it, she said for me to read it, it sounded, she said, she said for me to read it. Amazing. For all the parents who are here, we're going to make sure that you get an opportunity to get a good shot of everybody. Oh, okay, you're doing video, okay, all right, okay. All right, we're good? City of College Park proclamation for the College Park Favor Track Team. Whereas Favor House has partnered with the city of College Park Recreation and Cultural Arts Department since 2005, building a longstanding and impactful partnership dedicated to youth development, athletic excellence, and enriching the lives of young people. Whereas College Park Favor Track Team demonstrates strong dedication, working hard each week to improve in strength, speed, and technique, united by team spirit echoing their rallying cry. What is the rallying cry? Who are we?
Who are we? Favor. College Park Favor. Who are we? Favor. Who?
These athletes uplift one another and grow together. Their success is further nurtured by committed parents who actively support their children's physical development. This shared effort embodies Favor House's mission of building champions through unity, discipline, and community. Whereas Favor House's Georgia Favor Track Club, in collaboration with the city of College Park Recreation and Cultural Arts, hosted the fourth annual Spring Into Favor Track and Field Classic at Bageet Stadium, providing a day filled with competition, community, and team spirit. And whereas Coach Rex and Dr. Sabrina Willis, alongside dedicated coaches and supporters, have played a pivotal role in the growth and success of the College Park Favor Track and Field Program, demonstrating exceptional leadership, unwavering commitment, and transformative mentorship to student athletes, instilling in them the values of discipline, teamwork, and perseverance. And whereas the College Park Favor Track Team had a successful spring season, in which the season ran from December 2024 through April 2025, servicing over 100 youth and competed in five track meets. And whereas the College Park Favor Track Team had 36 athletes qualify for the Georgia Recreation Park Association Class A State Track Meet held at 12 Oak Stadium on April 25th through 26/25 in Lovejoy, Georgia. And whereas the College Park Favor Track Team had a total of two first-place state champions in individual events. Awardees include Jackson Seals in the 8U Boys 400 Meter Dash with an impressive time of 1 minute 10 seconds, and Kyler Burnham in the 9 to 10 girls softball throw with an impressive throw of 86 feet. Whereas, whereas the College Park Favor Track Team had a total of nine second-place state champions. Awardees include Isabel Garcia in the 6 to 8 girls 50 meter dash, Alan Huff, Nicholas Miller, Jackson Seals, and Chase Strickland in the 6 to 8 boys 4 by 4 meter, 4 by 400 meter relay, and Kyler Burnham, Malaysia Johnson Carr, Myla Johnson Carr, and Amina Moore in the 9 to 10 girls 4 by 400 meter relay. And whereas the College Park Favor Track Team had a total of five third-place state champions. Awardees Tristan Little in the 13 to 14 boys 100 meter hurdle, Alan Duff, DeAndre Huffman, Jackson Seals, and Chase Strickland in the 6 to 8 boys 4 by 100, and Hugo Paylorum as well. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of College Park, Georgia, that the College Park Favor Track Team is recognized for their hard work, their dedication, and their accomplishments at the GRPA Class A State Track Meet, proclaim this 21st day of July, 2025.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the athletes for all the hard work. We had a lot of new kids coming out this year, did a great job. Thanks for the parents who supported us and supported your kids through the spring season. Thank you to Michelle and their staff. It makes it easy when you got people who want to work with you and care about the kids. So thank you, Michelle Lance and Kirkland and Tanya, thank you all. It makes a difference when people care about the kids and want to make a difference. So thank you, and thank you to my family who did a big part too. Thank you.
All right, group. Get back right here. All right, here we go. We look around here, they burn. Three, six, one, two, three. You don't make that here. Three, seven, eight. Still with up there. All right, one, two. Yeah, one, two. Congratulations.
That's all. Next, our approval of them. The next few. Yep. It's me.
Item six H, consideration of an action on a request to issue a proclamation.
Madam Clerk, can you just give one more moment just to make sure everybody's
Yes, Madam Mayor.
I have a feeling the rest of the meeting isn't going to quite be as fun. But or as, as, as as chimy. Yes. All right, we've got the door closed now. Thank you so much.
Item six H, consideration of an action on a request to issue a proclamation celebrating the life and contributions of Thomas G. Sampson, Sr. This item is sponsored by Mayor Motley Brum.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. There's always discussion. Go right ahead.
Mayor, I would like to co-sponsor that Mr. Sampson. He was a true legend.
I honestly just want to get the proclamation done because, I mean, it's so everybody can join on, it doesn't really matter to me. So.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I'm there for a time.
Abstain, abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay, all right. So the motion passes with Councilmembers Karn, Arnold, and Gay in favor, and Councilmember McKenzie abstains.
Item six I, consideration of an action on a request to approve a proclamation honoring city staff and volunteers for the 2025 Juneteenth Celebration on Godby Road. This item is sponsored by Councilwoman Tracy Arnold.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous. Thank you.
Item six J, consideration of an action on a request to approve a proclamation for National Night Out Annual Event requested by Connie Rogers, Chief of Police.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item six K, consideration of an action on a request to issue a proclamation to the College Park Summer Youth Civic Leadership Academy class of 2025 at August 4, 2025 council meeting. This item is sponsored by Mayor Pro Tim Jamel McKenzie.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Agenda item seven, remarks of citizens. First public comment. Wendell Thomas.
I think that was, he had a proclamation, so he may have just signed in thinking that he had to do.
Stanley Mohammed.
Greetings, Mayor and Council.
Did you even greet?
Peace beyond you. Assalamu alaikum. I want to, first of all, say Bishmi la, Akhman arahim. In Proverbs 22 verse 8 reads, quote, "Whosoever sows injustice will reap calamity, and the rod of his fury will fail." Matthew 7 and 12 says, "So in everything do unto others what you would have them do to you." This sums up the law and the prophets. It is the political ruler Pharaoh of Egypt who propounded injustice towards the 400-year slaves, the children of Israel, which black people of America are the real children of Israel. Consequently, Pharaoh's wickedness and injustice angered God, so God punished Egypt with nine plagues, and the tenth plague was death. Likewise with America, it is the injustice of the politicians of this country, mainly against black people of America, that has kindled the anger of God against the rulers of this country. Consequently, America is currently being punished by God with rain, hail, snow, and earthquakes. The injustice of the political leadership of College Park is causing the anger of God. Consequently, weather disasters that we are witnessing around the country will increase in College Park and America because the political leadership refuses to repent. Injustice of the city council manager. I disagree with the city council manager terminating four to five black employees on her first day at work without a just cause. Do unto others as you will want others to do unto you. The scriptures also say, city manager, God is not mocked. Whatever one sows, so shall she reap. Why don't you terminate the Caucasian women, Ms. Michelle Johnson and Ms. Kelly Bogner, who was clearly unjust towards me? Well, for a member, Councilman Gay, you said nothing. But you, you want to build a park like that is going to justify the injustice towards your own constituents. Now, an independent investigation was done. Michelle Johnson was found by the city to be dishonest. Ms. Kelly Bogner, right here, forged my name. You said nothing. And the city manager and city council did absolutely and said nothing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Rex Willis.
He's not here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How y'all doing today? Um, I come here for several reasons. First, I want to address, I believe in standing up for people's rights and standing up as I did in the past. I stood up and fought for the police department, get a raise, the fire department, and public works. And they did. Thank goodness. Now I'm coming up here not asking for a favor, for someone to do a favor for me. I don't hear any outrage from anyone. When council vote for something and then a staff member comes and changes it, boy, if that was Dr. Daring, it would be so much fire and brimstone right now. But what got done to me, I want to say this for my family, not, it doesn't matter who else likes or don't, or how they feel about it. But this is for my family. RSW didn't do anything wrong. RSW, the city manager hadn't replied. She's got a staff member to do it, but RSW contract still stands, and it is in effect. I'm saying that to all staff members, department heads, and employees. I want it to be clear. I asked to meet with the city manager. She didn't meet with me. I'm still open to meet with you. But, as she knows, she was procurement director, so she knew what the vote was because she called me, got it on tape. Mr. Willis, you won the contract. If it does not matter, why did it take for the council to vote for it? Dr. Daring just could have signed off on it. He didn't. He put it through a bid. I won the bid. And then now I get a, never even got the courtesy of someone calling me or writing me as my contract states, because she already knows that, is doing it in writing. If there's some problem. See, it was a directive. What Dr. Daring did, everyone knowing for the last six months, the department heads that I have worked with, I told them I don't do everything. And my cut, my invoices shows that. So there's no ambiguity there. That's just something trying to hang the hat on. But what I'm saying to you, that's not right, it's not respectful. I stood up for each and every one of you all. My daughter Shanice Lewis, next, I'm taking her time. So I stood up for what's right. I ain't asking nobody to do me no favors. But all y'all be raising all kind of cane if the wrong person was up here, but it's me. But I'm going to stand up for what's right. The mayor, I hadn't heard you one time challenge, but you was on, well, you was on him pretty rough. But I'm not going to start with you, and I'm not going to come up here. I'm not upset. It's just a shame for Sabrina, I give to this community, like y'all just recognized me for over 20 years for this track program. The employees know before Trump got in, we was coming here with, and she knows too because she used to come out to the truck when we used to give food out. But for me to get treated that way, for someone to call me, say, Rex, what's wrong? Why do you remove your effect immediately? No preferred vendor. I am the preferred vendor. Until council changed that and says no longer. Not a staff member, not a city manager. I want it to be very clear to each and every one sitting here. Like I said, I don't want any problems, but I won that contract. My wife and myself and other people worked very hard to get it. No one gave me that. I expect city manager within five days to get a reply from you. I'm not begging. You do great. If you don't, we'll move forward, move on. And people, I don't need to go outside when I see it raining, go outside and get in the rain and get wet to know it's raining outside. Just do the right thing. That's why I'm asking you all, what you voted for? And the city manager, what she called me and said I won. So I expect that to happen. Not doing me a favor, just for what's right. And I asked to meet with you before, and I'm asking again. I like to get clarity, to meet with you, to clear up any things that, any ambiguity. I don't do everything. My contract don't say I do everything. I had been acting under everything. And I told the few department heads that I have worked for, I explained it very clearly. So I want everyone to know that also. I did more work for anybody in this building. Who? Who you think I did the most work for? All in the building, for any department, who? That man right there. Ten times more than anybody. You go tell, call him, because she ain't going to do it. I will bet you my life and say, hey, go pull out his requisitions, all his work orders. She ain't going to do it. You know why? I do. But I'm not going to address that tonight. But I know the truth, and I promise my family I won't get up here and raise cane and saying. I promise I wouldn't. So I'm going to stay positive. I hope you do the right thing, council and the city manager. That's all I'm asking, the right thing, no favors. But thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michael Majid.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman. My name is Michael Majid. I'm one of four, four-month EVA Thomas High School basketball players. Eva Thomas was established in 1964, and in 1969, our basketball team represented not only Eva Thomas High School, but the city of College Park. We were selected, well, we won the district championship in 69 and was headed down to Macon Coliseum to play in a tournament. We were the only black high school represented during that year, and we were the first black high school to play that Macon Coliseum. During that time, we won the state championship in Class A and B championship. It was a hard fought battle. We won the state championship. We came back to College Park and no one from the city or anyone said anything, done anything for the team and everything. So we're here tonight asking that the College Park City Council would consider getting the basketball team the championship ring that we never did receive from the city.
Well, my name is Ernest Shrain. I was always members of that, that high school team. And I don't know, we here to, I want to preserve some of the history of College Park, old College Park, and just tell you a little bit about College Park. This area, not right around here, the heart of College Park proper was a Mecca for our black community. Our grandparents, parents owned their homes. We had our own schools. We had our churches, plenty of churches, uh, Brady Recreation Center, and, you know, segregation was the reason for most of all that. And that's why we probably didn't get recognized for a lot of the stuff that we did. And a lot of talent came out of College Park, out of Eva Thomas, academic and sport, because we were some of that sport accolade. But what we did, we were allowed to participate with and against this white school for the first time back then. That was back in 1969. We went down to Macon Coliseum. We won.
Did, did y'all all sign up?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry. But we, we won the state championship. I don't know, we, we won, what, four games, three, three or four games, to win the state championship. But we weren't really recognized properly. We didn't feel like, so that's what we asking now, if we could be recognized here.
Yes, uh, Mayor, Councilman, I'm one of the players of the EVA Thomas 69 State Champion League class. Anyway, I'm one of the six remaining people that still are living. Yes. I passed a paper on, and I was going to name the players, all the players deceased of what, because they was a part of their legacy also. And for us to win in 69 state championship, Eva Thomas, College Park, I think it was a great honor for the citizen of College Park to recognize. And the players, we never got any recognition, but that was then, it's somewhere years ago. And it would be a nice gesture for that to happen now, if it could. And I, yeah.
We're asking, don't let our legacy die. We want to be recognized for what we've done and accomplished because we went through a lot, being harassed, being called out our names, but we did, that didn't matter to us. We know we had a job to do, and we did it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Next, Holly Rodriguez.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you for being here tonight. But I just wanna come and say to the community and to everyone, the lab at Brady and the garden are operating daily now. We did have some hiccups in the beginning with Brady going under construction and all that fun stuff, but our lab is open and our garden is open. We have flyers and everything that will be going live. I also wanna say that I do see our community moving closer together. I would like to see us doing more joint events. That would be great and easier on the community. If we could see our council coming together to do events together, that would be like so awesome. I also wanna say that, as a member of the community, I just ask that you guys make sure that you continue to hear the people that you are serving in the community. Make sure that we always matter. And it's not always about a photo op. But it is about being there and listening to the community, no matter how busy you are. I know that roles change, new people come in, people go out, and I've seen that happen. But I just, I will say that it really means something when you show up to an event and your council person, your city manager, they stop and they actually hear you and make you feel heard and not feel like you're inconveniencing them because they're rushing to the next meeting or they're rushing to the next thing. So that's really, really important. And I just wanna say, just be mindful of our community and our people and that, yeah, we love you guys and I'm thankful and that's it.
Thank you.
Isaiah Saim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Isaiah Saim. I am a business owner, to be specific, a package store owner, Camp Creek Liquor Store. I'm here to thank Pro Team McKenzie, Madame Mayor, and Councilwoman Arnold and Councilman Gay for your support. On June the 2nd, you guys passed a resolution to protect the existing package stores or liquor stores. And this shows that you're willing less to work with existing small business owners. And as, as small business owners, we are here to work with the city, the new city manager, whatever needs to be done from our business owner's perspective, especially the liquor store owners. So, thank you for your vote. I think the issue, maybe addressing the core issue might be best, which is the population issue. College Park used to have over 20,000 people. And the new, there was ordinance that was passed, one liquor store per 5,000. So now our population is declining, which affected our business as well. So, now that you give us for the existing business, businesses, a protection or some kind of guarantee to stay in business as long as we abide by the law. So this is a big relief for us, but just not only the owners, but also the employees. We employ several people. These are not just day to day, but we have people that do delivery that come to the store, people that bring ice, chips, liquor, sodas. So it's just not a one business. This is a business that employs or work with several people from the community and outside. So, thank you for your vote and appreciate for all that you guys have done as leaders of College Park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, that is all that I have signed up for, public comment in person.
All right. And so then we open it up to see if there's any, how much time is left?
Seventeen minutes and eight seconds.
All right. If anyone else who didn't, did I screw it up? Tell me if I screwed it up.
How, how do we still have seventeen?
I'm not really sure.
That's seventeen minutes minus the six minutes. I mean, that include, pardon me, that includes the six minutes for emailed public comments, which I do have.
Okay. So we've got 11 minutes then.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I did sign up, but I didn't hear my name called. But that's okay, too.
My apologies, sir. I thought it was one of the, your name was one of the individuals. Are you Larry Brady Evans?
Correct.
Yes, I do have you signed up.
Thank you so kindly, ma'am. For the record, my name is Larry Brady Evans. I reside at 2112 West Princeton Avenue, College Park, Georgia. I said it then and I'm gonna say it again. I've been here since 1959. I was read here in the city of College Park. And I pray tonight that Almighty God guide every word that comes out my mouth tonight. And not to let one word be taken out of its proper place by the little mockery makers and criticize us. First, I'd like to address the issue that it was said that we should go back, you should go back where you come from. You're not from there. That's poor judgment to me. I've heard that in the 60s when some people said, you all need to go back where you come from cuz you wasn't from over here. It's not a personal attack on anyone. It's about your skills of leadership. And the type of leadership that we have here in College Park seem to be divided. It's not all for one and one for all. It's individuals who seem to wanna have their names in bright lights and have personal accomplishments for themselves and opposed to the city. I see a lot going on in our city today. And especially as I see the five of you all sit there, not one of you all was raised here in College Park, not a one. So, it would be an insult if someone told you all, go back where you come from and go to work there cuz you're not from here. You can ride the coattail of your family members and say they was here or they was there, but you wasn't. You have no clue of what we've been with here in College Park. You are Johnny come lately. And I respect that. And to the city manager, you're in a hot seat. That seat you sitting in is like a rocket, getting ready to blast off to the moon. Cuz I've seen that seat. And I've seen people who hold that seat to be eradicated from that seat. From some of those who have that Sergeant Carter attitude. And they want you to be go to my pile.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone in here would love me there three minutes? Please, please raise your hand if not.
Is there anyone else signed up?
No, Madam Mayor.
May I continue?
Unfortunately, sir, no, you get the three minutes.
I'll be back.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishes to speak? They may.
I actually emailed in my comment. I wasn't sure how that worked.
It will be read.
Okay.
Anyone in the audience, anyone else wishes to speak? All right. Seeing done, we will shift to the email comments.
First comment is from Mercedes Lucas.
Dear, dear city council members, I am writing on behalf of Nirvana Cranbrook Apartments located at 2200 Godby Road to express our serious and growing concerns about the impact of homelessness and related criminal activity on our property and surrounded, surrounding area, particularly since the closure of 2135 Godby Road. Since that closure, we have seen a significant increase in the break-ins in vacant units despite having two courtesy offers from the, officers from the College Park Police Department on site. These break-ins are accompanied by extensive damage and illegal activity, including broken windows and doors, holes punched in walls, carpet fires, units left with clothing, stolen goods, and drug paraphernalia. In many cases, the intruders escape before police arrive. And even when individuals are apprehended, they often face minimal consequences, only to return and repeat the behavior. Many concerningly, more concerningly, residents are now experiencing break-ins to their own apartments and vehicles, greatly increasing fear and frustration among the community. Additionally, we have a growing number of homeless individuals living at the Marta bus stops in front of 2200 and 2135 Godby Road. We have received multiple complaints, multiple complaints of people urinating in public and in some cases defecating and urinating in the breezeways of our buildings. Individuals are also sleeping in stairwells, making it unsafe for residents, especially women, children, and seniors to comfortably and confidently access their homes. Many residents have reported feeling threatened and scared and several are considering moving out due to the decline in safety and quality of life. As a property management team, the situation has escalated beyond our capacity. We respectfully ask, what can the council do to help address this crisis? Can additional officers or directed patrols be deployed in this area, particularly after hours 12:00 AM to 7:00 AM? Are there outreach services or task forces available to help relocate or support the homeless population? Can the city help enforce property protection laws and public sanitation ordinances more strictly? This situation is causing serious harm to our residents and our businesses. We need meaningful support and swift action from the city to protect the people who call this community home. Thank you for your time and attention to this urgent matter and I look forward to your response. Warmest regards, Mercedes Lucas.
Next public comment is from Linda Hightower. Good evening. The Honorable Mayor Motley Broome and College Park City Council, still standing together One Square Mile 2025 Annual Reunion. Though the businesses, churches, homes, and other buildings may be gone, though the streets we once walked may no longer exist, we are still here, still standing, still connected by a love and a legacy that no bulldozer, no airport expansion, and no urban renewal plan could ever erase. This is One Square Mile. We may not be here anymore, but it lives in our hearts. It was more than a patch of land. It was a place where we were known, where we were safe and where we belong. A place where neighbors were like family and every block told a story. When One Square Mile was dismantled, when the homes were removed and our families were scattered, it wasn't just our homes that were lost. We lost sacred ground. We lost porches where our grandparents prayed. We lost streets where we learned to ride bikes and dreamed of our futures. We lost places where love lived out loud. Even though all of that, we are still here. That's why this reunion matters so much. Our One Square Mile 2025 reunion is more than gathering. It's a revival, a revival of memory, of pride, of connection. It's a sacred act of resistance because every hug, every story, every familiar face will say loud and clear, we were never erased. Each year we reunite, we restore what was torn apart. We honor our past, we lift our elders, and we hand down the truth to our children. You come from something strong. You come from people who survived, you loved hard, who never gave up. So we will celebrate, let us laugh, let us cry, let us remember and rejoice. Let us say the names of those who come, came before us and plant the seeds of legacy for those who will come after. Because One Square Mile will never, was never just a location. It was a people and we are still that people, still standing, still proud, still home. Welcome back, family. This is One Square Mile, this is 2025, and this, this is love. Thank you, Linda Hightower, City of South Fulton, Georgia. Next comment is from Julie McGorick. Dear Mayor and Council, I hope this email finds you off to a great start this week. I first wanted to thank you for addressing the creek blockage issue on Conley between Virginia and Cambridge. Last week, I sent an email to the city manager to report an issue with the flow of the Stormwater Creek that runs behind my house at 1917 Virginia Avenue. There's a lot of debris in the creek that is affecting the natural flow of water and creating lots of areas of standing water and erosion issues. I have lost about six feet of land behind my house in the year, in the past year due to erosion. There are many large trees that are barely hanging on along the bank. Aside from worried about the trees along the bank, the erosion and the water backup from downstream, I am most concerned about the standing water and the incredible number of mosquitoes that are breeding. The city manager replied to my email with a See Click Fix reference link. In the See Click Fix app, Lisa Swan has left this comment. We are aware of the issue and working towards a repair solution. And see, on tonight's consent agenda, item 9B, Mr. Cotton is requesting $65,488.50 for Jewel to self to remove and hollow away debris from the city drainage culvert structure to prevent flooding upstream to residential homes in Ward 1. Can someone please clarify? This is for the creek blockage on Conley between Virginia and Cambridge and all the way to College Street. Clearing the cutsu and debris on Conley will not correct the standing water and mosquito breeding behind my house, nor will it correct the erosion when we have heavy rain day after day. West Nile virus has already been detected in mosquito traps in Fulton County and as close as Hayfield. Does College Park have a schedule or spraying? If so, please publish the schedule. Thank you for your time with this matter and I hope to hear from someone soon regarding this. Warm regards, Julie McGorick. Next public comment is from Jason Kalip. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to emphasize the importance of slowing down and thoroughly evaluating decisions before making them. Rush, rushed decisions can have devastating consequences. The city has had several such decisions, as well as those made by BIDA and the board composed of council members and appointees. Council should lead by example and conduct proper vetting before making decisions. Some examples of rushed decisions that have cost us money include and negative publicity. Rapidly firing Stanley Hawthorne resulted in a large payout. Interviews for the last city manager were conducted without prior knowledge of the mayor and a councilwoman. He didn't even make it a year from hiring. The quitclaim deed for Bill Evans and the rezoning for next Tera resulted in citizen outrage and legal action. Bida canceled a Six West contract and faced legal action there. The Bida chair signed a contract without a board vote, leading to almost 600,000 in commission. They were not entitled to, that, they were not entitled to a Keller Williams office. The invoice was paid by the former city manager without a supporting contract for the time period when the executive director was not available. Given the substantial price tag of the consent agenda for tonight's meeting, I encourage you to slow down, remove, or table those items that require further investigation or discussion. Lead by example for the other boards and ensure that you make thoughtful decisions that don't cost the taxpayer, taxpayers additional funds. Thank you, Jason Kalip, Mercer Avenue. Last public comment is from Dee Dee Palmer. Greetings, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. This public statement is in response to the email received from the city manager on June 20th, 2025. I appreciate your reply to the email I've attached about pedestrian safety at West Rugby and Washington Road. There is significant concern among neighbors on West Rugby at Washington Road. As has been alluded to in this email thread, this is a historical concern that has been repeatedly raised with city officials dating back many, over many years to multiple mayors, councilpersons, and public work directors. I was disheartened by Dr. Adair's request to include West Rugby at Washington Road's pedestrian safety in a sidewalk plan, but more importantly, in the fiscal '26 budget. However, your comment, please also note that the city implemented a See Click Fix last year, so I'd like to encourage you to report any issues. so I'd like to encourage you to report any issues that you may have regarding the city so that you can begin establishing proper records and reports. It seemed off-putting when suggesting that we need to get into the See Click Fix queue for action to be taken. I want to let you know about the significance of this longstanding, over 20 years, concern and the current liability it represents for the city. As a homeowner on West Rugby, I'm constantly having to seek safety on my neighbor's lawns to avoid being run over by speeding cars. Fearing for my life while attempting to walk on a West Rugby, however, enjoying a leisurely walk on East Rugby remains baffling. I am confused why this request for residence safety on West Rugby continues to be ignored. Could you please confirm through your actions that the importance of this historic concern for taxpaying citizens on West Rugby will not be delayed due to lack of inclusion in the See Click Fix database as it has already been approved for budget inclusion? Respectfully, Didi Palmer. And those are all of the emailed public comments, Madam Mayor.
All right. I don't think we have any.
Next item is public hearing. We do not have any public hearings this evening. And item nine is the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn. No discussion here. All those in favor.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Regular business, item 10A, consideration of an action on a special event permit for the College Park Reunion Committee to hold the College Park Annual Coming Home Reunion at Jamestown Lot on August 30, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. This item is being requested by Queenie Brown Deputy City Clerk. This will affect Ward 2.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Let me make a brief comment. Oh, first off, if anyone took offense to what my comments were, I profoundly apologize, but I would like to tell you that I think my words were taken out of context. And I don't want to prolong anyone's time, but I just want the public that may have heard the earlier dialogue to know that, essentially, I'm working to bring value to the Coming Home Reunion. That's been my goal, to provide that community, a community that my family was part of. I'm a proud Atlanta native, four generations. I'm not from College Park. But I've met with the Coming Home Reunion. It was three, four generations in the freezing cold before Lolly Miller was even built. And we met twice to talk about what a beautiful thing it could be to bring those people back to a community that was theirs on a street that costs much as $11 million. Oh, and for those that don't know the history, Coming Home Reunion was not based on Jamestown. It's been all over our city. It started actually where the arena is. So I don't want my words to be taken out of content to the people who, oh, heard us talking. And then one thing I notice about me is that change is, you know, goes through three phases. It's always ridiculed, it's always opposed, and then when they over there on that street enjoying themselves, that'll be the point I would simply make. It's a beautiful community, and I just think that, but when you're just dealing with three people, they want to show that they have the power, and God bless you for having some power, that they don't want to expand that to the minds and hearts of the other community. But that's a beautiful opportunity for that community to enjoy their community. And the last thing I want to say, you know, I spent months and months and months trying to talk to the people in apartments. My wife and I, my family, have spent years trying to bring value to that community. We've talked about, that's not one conversation about College View Housing Complex in any of the BIDA discussions. There is no conversation whatsoever about College View Housing Complex being part of anything in BIDA discussion. All we talk about is that we're going to get $700,000 for our house, or we're going to get a million dollars for my house, how much money I can get for my lot. But not one discussion has been in BIDA about mixing that community with Six West. And what I've always said was, we've been brought the guy who built the Atlanta skyline of public houses. We've even met with them extensively on how College View Housing Complex, the new generation of those people, can be mixed and blended into the future of Six West. So I don't want my words to ever be taken out of content because all I ever want to do is bring value to a community and show other ways that it could be accomplished.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Agenda item 10B, consideration of an action on a special event permit to host soul-to-soil farmer's market pop-up by Keith Courtney on August 15, 2025, rain date, August 23, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Grassfield Area at the corner of Riverdale Road. This item is requested by Queenie Brown Deputy City Clerk. This event is located in Ward 2.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item 10C, consideration of an action on a request for a special event permit from St. John's Episcopal Church to host St. John's Block Party in August 23 at 3480 East Main Street. This item is requested by Queenie Brown Deputy City Clerk. This item is in Ward 3.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item 10D, consideration of an action on a request to consider waiving the business license penalties/interest fees in the amount of $61,229 for the City of Atlanta Department of Aviation. This item is being requested by Sabrina Walters, Inspections/Operations Manager.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor.
Madam Mayor.
Ma'am?
Apologies for the interruption. I believe Mr. Sacks was going to speak to this agenda item.
If he's speaking, there's no one.
I was going to ask.
He's here, right?
Yes.
So can they come down and tell what we're waiving?
Yeah, that's what I want.
While we're writing off $61,000?
All right.
Isn't that the airport right there? You're not, that's not the airport?
Yes, that, those are representatives of the airport. They're here on a separate issue. They're here on a separate issue.
Oh, true.
Yes.
Good evening.
Pardon the interruption, Mayor. Thought he wanted to speak, so.
Mr. Sacks?
I'm just here to answer any questions if I can help you on anything with that item.
Could you highlight the specifics of the item since?
I just know some of the basics on it because obviously Sabrina Walters was handling that item. As near as I can tell, the business license fees weren't paid on time, and so they received some penalties and late fees for that, and they're just requesting those to be waived. That's all. That's all that I really know for sure.
Any questions to Mr. Sacks? Councilmember Carn?
Probably it'd be good to get some details from Sabrina, I guess, as well about this. As I understand, there were some other circumstances there, but do you have, you have a recommendation on this? And this is out of your office here?
I would recommend that we enforce the penalties as the city council has set for the, how that works.
And Sabrina agrees with that, Ms. Walters?
I believe that Sabrina referred it up to city manager, and they wanted to bring it up before you because they were fairly significant charges, I believe.
Ms. Miller, do you have any insight?
I did speak with Sabrina. We are agreeing that we should recommend that.
That they waive the fees?
That we do not waive.
That you do not waive the fees? Okay.
A question. So I'm assuming we got some kind of correspondence back and forth from the aviation outfits in terms of what they say happened, whatever happened.
I do not.
Does anybody have any?
I can get, I can provide those to you. I do have one of the sets, I think, with the Department of Aviation. I don't have the set for item E, but I do have the set for aviation with me if you'd like to look at those.
Councilmember Arnold?
Is it possible that we could table this to the next meeting? So that we can get more details? Were there special circumstances that, you know, that made them late? You know, we don't, I don't think we have enough details.
Based on the emails, there's, they just didn't pay it on time, and it was just a process of going back and forth.
Right, but we don't have those emails inside of our packet. So we don't see the communication back and forth. We don't see the communication from the requesters to waive the fee as to whether or not they were dealing with any special or extenuating circumstances as to why they didn't pay.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Who made the motion in the second?
The motion was made by Councilman Carn, seconded by Councilman Gay to approve.
All right. Councilmember Carn, do you still want to do that? You want to withdraw your motion?
I think I withdraw the motion. My assumption was that, you know, there was a recommendation to approve this. Now, obviously, I'd like to hear from the outfit in terms of why they feel they'd do a waiver, and I thought someone would come up with that information in terms of exactly what the circumstances were. So I think it's, we probably want to have the other party here to see what it is they're asking us in terms of, you know, whatever their side of the situation is, if that's what they want to do. Otherwise, if they decline to come, then, you know, if they owe us the money, they owe us the money, unless it's some extenuating circumstances or something that, does anybody, has anyone heard a response from this outfit in terms of why they're asking for this?
All right.
So is it just basically, they're saying nothing at all, but we don't want to pay it for no reason?
Okay, so the motion has been withdrawn, so is there another motion on the table?
I'll make a motion to table it.
All right.
And bring it back for.
Okay, is there a second?
More information.
Is there, is there, there's a motion to table and bring it back for additional information? Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Discussion?
I.
Mayor Potem?
My feeling is that we've gotten the recommendation to not pay it, I mean, to not, we've gotten the recommendation to not let it go, okay, from staff. And did they, were they aware that they were on the agenda, City Manager? Was this outfit aware that they were?
No, I do not think they are aware. And Mayor and Council, I'm going to make the recommendation that we table it until I reach out to the other parties myself.
Yeah, that's what my question was. I wanted to know if, because if they didn't know, then I'm definitely in favor of tabling. If they did know and no one showed up with a reason, then I was going to say otherwise.
I cannot speak to what they were confirmed.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Carn? If you just asked, go right ahead.
You know, give it the benefit of the doubt, but, you know, if staff's done their homework on it, then we can kind of understand what happened. But if they owe it, they owe it. They're going to have to pay it, bottom line. But if it was some kind of circumstances that, where we might consider some kind of an exception, then we need to see what that is. So, yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of tabling until, for additional information.
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item 10E is consideration of an action on a request to consider waiving the business license penalties/interest fees in the amount of $28,176 for Unify Aviation LLC North and South Terminal. This item is being requested by Sabrina Walters, Inspections and Operations Manager.
Is there a motion?
Got discussion.
All right, there is a motion. Is there a second?
I didn't make a motion, but I have a question.
We need a motion before we have discussion.
We always have discussion before motions.
I'm not here to argue. We just need a motion before there is discussion. All right, there is no motion. Moving forward.
Well, I do have a question.
Councilmember, we don't have a motion, so there, that we don't hear that item.
Well, I do have a question.
Councilmember? We didn't have a, Councilmember. Councilmember, you're out of order. We don't, sir?
Okay.
Sir?
Thank you.
Item 10F?
Item 10F is consideration of an action on a request to approve a power sales agreement with 4570 Edson PSA LLC Data Center. This item is being requested by Hugh Richardson, Director of Power. This is a budgeted item. This item is located in Ward 2.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item 10G, consideration of an action on a request to approve a power sales agreement with Clean Block Data Center. This item is requested by Hugh Richardson, Director of Power. This is a budgeted item. This item is located in Wards 2 and 3.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Is there, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
All right. That is unanimous.
Item 10H, consideration of an action on a request to approve a power sales agreement with ATL Data Centers. This item is requested by Hugh Richardson, Director of Power. This is a budgeted item. This item is located in Wards 2 and 3.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Agenda item 10I, consideration of an action on a request to approve or deny the Charter Review Commission membership ordinance.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Is there a second?
Is this to approve or deny?
It's, it's, it's.
I don't understand that.
Just a motion so we could discuss. Discuss. I made a motion.
What is, and your motion is?
My motion is to discuss it, basically. I mean, I made the motion to approve or deny what it says.
Do you, we need one or the other?
Who has some information?
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay.
To deny the Charter Review Commission membership ordinance? Okay, is there a second?
Well, hold, hold.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. That motion died for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
Motion to deny the Charter Review Commission ordinance, membership ordinance.
That one's already been addressed.
He seconded.
City Attorney.
Hold on, wait, wait, hold on.
Pass a discussion here.
Hold on. I asked for a second. There wasn't a second. And so there, is there another motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion. Motion to change the Charter Review Commission membership ordinance.
All right, is there a second?
Second, but discussion.
There's always discussion. Thank you, Councilmember Carn. Go right ahead.
City Attorney, if you could give us a little understanding on, there's a tweak that needs to be made.
The ordinance in your packet would remove the membership from the Fulton County delegation to the General Assembly and the Clayton County delegation to the General Assembly. As you are aware, each member of the governing body selects two members to the Charter Review Commission. Then the Fulton County delegation would select a member, then the Clayton County delegation would select a member. This ordinance amendment would remove those latter provisions such that the delegations would not select a member, rather it would only be the five members of the governing body selecting members.
Yeah.
Councilmember Carn? Go right ahead.
My understanding was, I guess technically speaking, the City of College Park, that we have a delegation in one sense, obviously our representatives and Senate members, but in terms of an official delegation being established, is that kind of the issue per se there, or?
Well, I'm not certain if that was the issue, Councilman. What I do know was that the amendment would mean that the Georgia General Assembly, or no portions thereof, would select members to the Charter Review Commission. It would only be 10 members, two by each member of the governing body, and that would be it. There would be no members appointed by members of the General Assembly.
Councilmember Arnold?
So with that amendment, or that change, or that recommendation, then how do, if there's a tie, how does it get broken? There's, it's only the appointment of each one of the wards, right? There's 10 people on the, on the commission, and then the attorney sits on the commission.
as ex officio, so then how does the tie get broken?
It was gonna be the same issue with twelve, but I, so I'm not certain, we didn't anticipate tiebreakers.
Right.
So.
Hold on, hold on, mate, everyone, if you, if you would just let me, if you just, if you wanna speak, just let me know, and, and we can go from there, Councilmember Arnold's still speaking though.
So originally, when we spoke, it was that we would have someone to represent from our legislative delegation, right? We knew that we, we know that in the City of College Park, we have Fulton County and we have Clayton County. Does that mean that we have to have individuals from Fulton and Clayton? Do we have separate delegations, or should we be looking at the delegation that represents College Park only?
That is certainly a choice for the governing body this evening, if you want to go in that direction, I mean, you have many options for you, the original ordinance, the ordinance as amended in your packet, or, Councilwoman Arnold, what you just suggested, or something else that a member of the governing body might suggest tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mayor Potem?
Yes, I, I received communication from our state members, it was becoming problematic in terms of how that would be done, in terms of the selection of members, but also, I think more importantly is the, the ordinance as it reads is incorrect, because there is not, College Park does not have a Fulton County delegation and a Clayton County delegation. All College Park has is a Clayton, I mean, a College Park delegation, which is made up of the state representatives that represent the City of College Park. So when we start looking at taking a member from the Clayton, there is not a Clayton County delegate, I'm repeating myself, but I'll say it again, there is not a Clayton County delegation for College Park, there's not a Fulton County delegation. So the wording in that documentation is incorrect, that's one thing. And the, there's only one person that I believe that we have, is that correct? You can correct me, Councilwoman Arnold, do we only have one person from Clayton County representing College Park?
No.
How many?
We have two.
Two, okay, so basically, you have two, two persons from the Clayton, and then we have about four or five people, so it really didn't, and then there were people that were in the Fulton County delegation, not every member in the Fulton County delegation represents the City of College Park. And so there was chatter amongst the Fulton County delegation as to why they were even being pulled into this. But I think what's more important, the question I'd like to ask you, Attorney Denmark, is in the formation of the Charter Review Commission, is there a requirement somewhere that says that there must be a representative to the state? Because in my understanding, is this Charter Review Commission is to be made up of citizens from the city that are going to make a recommendation to, to this, this governing body, and then we would make our recommendations to the, the House and Senate members that represent our city, so it's almost redundant, because you'd have only one person from each of those if we followed the previous ordinance wording, which is not correct, and then it would be brought back to them again, so I, I can see how that can even be problematic. But the question is basically, is this a requirement for a charter commission to have representatives on the state level?
No, ma'am, it's not a requirement, but just a little bit of context, I represent the City of Stonecrest, and in the Stonecrest Charter, there's a provision that requires that they do a Charter Review Commission periodically, and their charter sets forth the membership. And in that charter provision, it says that the DeKalb County delegation will select a member to serve on their Charter Review Commission. And doesn't matter whether those members of the DeKalb County delegation represent the City of Stonecrest, someone might be Dunwoody or, or parts north, doesn't matter, it just says the DeKalb County delegation shall select a member, and State Senator Tanya Anderson serves on the Stonecrest Charter Review Commission. So that's what they do at Stonecrest, we don't have to do that in College Park, you could limit it to no members of the General Assembly selecting a member, the entire Fulton County delegation selecting a member, whether or not they represent College Park, or just the members of College Park, the members who represent the City of College Park, that delegation, the, you know, you have the whole playing field in front of you, other communities do it their way, College Park needs to do it its way, but you could have the Fulton delegation, including Alpharetta and parts north, off to the edge of the earth, picking a member that will be on the College Park Charter Review Commission, same thing with Clayton County, even though they may not represent the City of College Park, you could have the people down in Rex and whatever, the entire delegation selecting a member, it's lawful to do it that way, you may prefer that it not be done that way, and that would be a fine public policy determination on your part, but just to be clear, you have every option in front of you.
Mr. Denmark, I have a couple of questions. So, in the formation of charter commissions in other communities, is it typical to see involvement from the state delegation, however that is comprised?
I would not, Madam, Madam Mayor, I would not say that it is typical, but it's certainly not unprecedented either.
To Councilmember Arnold's point, I think, instead of striking the membership, if, I think the goal is that we would have the opportunity to have guidance from the people who would be actually moving this legislation through the State House. So, it would seem to me that we actually need to be more specific, instead of omitting the membership, and saying that those members of the Fulton County delegation who represent the City of College Park make a determination, and those members of the Clayton County delegation who represent College Park make a representation. But I do think it's important for us to have the insight of folks under the Gold Dome participating in this process to, to shepherd it forward and make it easier as it moves, moves along the way. Councilmember Karn?
Well, I've got a couple of suggestions, and I hear what you're saying, Mayor, and I don't necessarily disagree with it. Okay, my understanding, we're talking, we have ten members as, as is now, correct?
Yes.
Which makes it easy for a tie vote. Two of those ten members would be one, according to the document we have now, would be one Fulton and one from the Clayton delegation. Okay, so there are twelve members, which again, would lead us to a tie. Now, if we were to back up and say basically, the College Park State delegation, which includes Fulton and Clayton County, would select one member, that would do a couple of things, give the state some involvement, but at the same time eliminating the possibility of a tie. But generally, I would think that a city charter commission would of course consist of the residents of that particular city affected, obviously, the overwhelming majority of them. Having one state delegation selection, I think, again, I think I can live with that, and that would also prevent any tie situations, so we could look at that and back it up to eleven members, and that way, that may solve where the collective delegation, Clayton and Fulton, can select one member, we won't have ties, and the majority of the board would be College Park residents.
I've got another suggestion.
I have something.
What about two in Fulton and one in Clayton?
I don't.
It goes to an odd, it goes to an odd number.
I object.
Wait, hold on, I've.
I was saying something before you started talking.
So just, I'll, I'll be right with you, I promise. But, Councilmember Karn, to your point, I think the, in a Fulton, if the entirety of the delegation selects one person, my only concern is that we have most of our population in Fulton and most of our assets in Clayton, and I certainly don't want any of that to be overlooked as, as we develop this moving forward. And I know that thirteen's a little unwieldy, but I think we might be missing something if we only have our Clayton, I'm sorry, our City of College Park delegation selecting one person. I, I understand, I understand the necessity for an odd number, but just wanted to throw that out there. Mayor Potem?
I'm sorry.
Uh, we're, we're talking about, I think, I think the thing to consider is, it's one thing for us as a governing body to put together ordinances and legislation that pertains to our responsibilities and our city, however, again, I, I'm hearing what's being said here, but some other things have been said outside in the state, on the state level. We have put together a piece of legislation which includes people who have not asked to be included, and I think that before this was crafted, that it would have been nice to ask the state if they wanna be involved. And what we did is we put a burden on our state delegation because it wasn't clear, or our College Park delegation, you know, we did have one representative from the Clayton that right away said that they were willing to do it, but it became very problematic for members who are representing from Fulton. And with that, my understanding is that, you know, it's just like if you, just because you live in my neighborhood up the street, doesn't mean that, you know, you're gonna walk my dog when I'm gone, I need to ask you first, I can't assume that you're gonna want to, this is, our state delegation, these are persons that have jobs, they have responsibilities, and this is going to require a great deal of their time. And like I said, whatever this commission determines, if it's made up of city members, it's still going to the state, and the state can still be advisory members of this commission, but to, we have done it, I've been a part of organizations and we have included elected officials, we've got one right here in this city, and they can't make it to these meetings. We need to know that the persons that are in this commission are boots on the ground, gonna be down to be at these meetings, and are willing to take on this additional work. And I'm just saying, as it is right now, I feel like we have placed an unfair burden on our state representatives and senators. I didn't see anybody beating down the door.
Hold on, Council.
To wanting to do this.
Hold on, Councilmember Arnold?
Except for one member of the Clayton delegation.
For the Clayton, yeah. So I just wanna make sure that we correct the record a little bit, which is that when we first started talking about this, we were asked to reach out to find volunteers, so we haven't put any undue burden on anyone. I asked the Clayton County individuals whether or not if they wanted to participate. They made a decision on whether or not if they wanted to, just like anyone else, just like with any other commission or board that we, that we create. It doesn't necessarily put any pressure on anyone or mandate on anyone, they can make a decision on whether or not if they have the time to be able to commit to doing this. So, I don't know what happened with, on the Fulton side, but I thought we all discussed that we were going to reach out to our legislative partners collectively. That's just my comment.
Councilmember Gay?
Okay.
Well, my only take on it, my colleagues, is this, Winston Denmark started this whole issue of a Charter Review Committee, that's where it started, okay? What I recall was that we hired three lobbyists and paid them good money because our charter was being attacked, that's what I remember. And so, the attorney, in my opinion, came up with the idea that, hey, why don't you involve people, and y'all look at y'all's charter collectively, then it won't be any surprise attacks. I disagreed then, I disagree now. That charter been good for a hundred years, now all of a sudden, it's an attack on the charter, just like you wanna change the Constitution. That charter been good for a hundred years, some things are fundamentally sound, it got us to where we are now, but all of a sudden, mighty funny, oh, now something wrong with our charter. Wasn't nothing wrong with it for a hundred years.
Hundred and thirty-five.
Until this council started looking like it looked, now all of a sudden, it's an attack on our charter, so no, I don't wanna put no state or other House, Congress on our Charter Review Committee, you know why? Because they all have collective opinions. You may put one on there who wanna attack the charter, you may put one on there who don't wanna attack the charter, you may put one on there who don't have time to do one or the other. So my thought process is, if you're gonna start talking about the charter, start on a local level with citizenry. But, but we not gonna play this, uh, this game, who to pick, 'cause that, 'cause if we could just cut through the chase, 'cause I wanna go home at a decent hour, that's what this is, that's what this conversation is, is dancing around who you want and don't want on this charter. So the way to dance around that is, just don't put nobody on the charter, or table the thing, 'cause we not gonna sit here all night, man, and, and go back and forth about this charter, 'cause we all know what this is. So, my recommendation would be, what I'm voting for is we start with our citizenry, because as, as Councilwoman Arnold just said, they all got the weighing on our charter anyways, if one of them wanna do something, let them sponsor some legislation. And that's what I think, that's what I think, I think that's where we are.
Thank you, sir, does anyone else have any discussion? All right, so, Mayor Potem, to clarify, your change is to omit the, the Fulton and Clayton County delegation from the Charter Review Commission, correct?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Come on, Joe, we can't be here all night.
Sir, I call for the vote, I call for the vote.
Take your vote.
So, hold on, sir, hold on, sir. Those opposed?
Aye.
Councilmember Karn, would, do you abstain?
I wanted to tell.
Sir, what is your vote, sir, sir, sir? I've called for the vote, what is your, what is your vote?
All right, so the vote is to, again, tell me, what was, what?
To omit the Fulton and Clayton delegates from the charter commission.
We just have citizens.
What is your vote, sir?
So we would, it would be citizens?
Yes, to omit the, to omit them from the ordinance, so it would be citizens only, what is your vote, sir?
Uh, uh, I think I'm okay with it being citizens based, but I would.
Sir, what is your vote, sir, are you in favor? Is it yes?
I am.
Okay, all right, so the, the motion passes with Councilmembers McKenzie, Karn, and Gay in favor, and Councilmember Arnold opposed.
But one.
Sir, that's it, that's it.
Again, I had one thing.
Sir, that's it.
May and council.
That's it. Next item.
Item J. It's about to restart, apologies, but I do have the agenda in my hand, I can continue to read through, this screen just will not be displaying. Item 10J is consideration of an action on a request to approve or deny the redemption notices.
Is there a motion?
Ed, I need some.
Is, I need a motion before we start discussion.
I'd like to.
I understand, sir, but if there's, if there's, if there's a motion, we need a motion before we, before we have discussion.
I'd like to get a little information first.
I understand, sir, but we need a motion before we have discussion.
Some moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, is your motion to approve the redemption notices?
Yes.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay, discussion. Councilmember Karn, go right ahead.
Okay, Ed, you wanna kind of?
Yes, sir, good evening, Councilman Karn, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, in June of 2006, the City of College Park sold on behalf of the City of Atlanta 211,880,000 for the Conrak facility, and 21,980,000 for the Skytrain maintenance facility, and they're paid for by the car facility charge, an extra charge that they put on every rental car, and back in '06, it was at $4. It was a brand new charge, it'd never been done before, and so, the bond folks for the City of Atlanta said it would be best if we found a conduit, and the conduit issued the bonds, and that revenue would be pledged in an intergovernmental contract, an intergovernmental contract was called an installment sale. And so you all, as a courtesy, on behalf of the City of Atlanta, issued those bonds And so you all, as a courtesy, on behalf of, uh, the City of Atlanta, issued those bonds for them back in two thousand and six. And, um, you have a conduit issuer for you called College Park Bida, but you, mayor and council, acted as a conduit issuer for the City of Atlanta in this particular transaction. The city had no liability whatsoever for the payment of the debt, you were just merely the conduit that allowed them to get that debt sold. That car facility charge has now been in effect for, um, uh, what, twenty years, twenty, almost twenty years now, sixteen, twenty-six, almost twenty years. The City of Atlanta wants to refinance that debt and pay it off. And because you issued it, you have to send the redemption notice to the holders to, to actually let them redeem that debt. And so, um, this is a, just a governmental function for you to allow them to redeem their debt. The City of Atlanta selling debt on their own, payable from the same revenue sources to pay it off. Interest rates were around five-point-six percent on the taxable debt, and four-point-six percent on the tax-exempt debt, and they're gonna now pay it off with their own bonds. Yes, sir. And I have here, City of Atlanta folks, CFO of the airport is here.
Mr. Wall, we can hear you, but I'm sure the folks at home cannot. I know you're, you're introducing him, but just stay close to the microphone.
Oh, yeah, so we have the City of Atlanta, uh, airport folks here, if you need them. Also, their bond lawyer is here, um, if you need her.
All right, Mr. CFO, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from you briefly.
Good evening, my name's Brian Benefield, I'm the Deputy General Manager and Chief Financial Officer at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport. I'm Mayor Barum, City Council Member, so, uh, Mr. Wall actually gave a pretty good explanation of what we're trying to accomplish here. Uh, I'll give you a little bit more reason why we're doing that, as he mentioned, the facility, um, is a little over fifteen years old now, it opened in two thousand and nine. Uh, there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done to, uh, put renewal and replacement dollars back into that facility to make sure the train system, the stations, both the airport station, the GICC station, and the rental car center station are all functional and can maintain that way for multi-years into the future. Also, the airport continues to grow, the area around the GICC station continues to grow, both with College Park facilities and City of Atlanta facilities. So we're just continuing to, uh, invest in and maintain that asset, which is a significant asset that supports both, uh, City of College Park and the City of Atlanta. And I'll stop there and see if you have anything else for me.
Thank you, Mr. Benefield. Any questions?
Well.
Councilmember Carn, go right ahead.
A couple of issues ahead, and thank y'all for coming out. Um, you know, we've discussed some of this, um, and in terms of growth around our hospitality campus, uh, obviously, you know, more growth is, I guess, good for all. Uh, with the addition of the parking structure, five-thousand-plus, uh, pieces there, that, you know, in a sense dwarfs, you know, a combination of all of our hotel rooms goes without saying, so, you know, the level of the disproportion of that entity coming into play in terms of repair and maintenance, in a sense, you know, that's something I wanted to look a little closer at. Uh, the other thing is, you know, is my understanding, the additional properties bought, uh, there at the Conrak facility, which used to be, uh, twenty-two forty-five Roosevelt Highway, uh, old apartment complex and whatnot. Uh, I understand a part of that was slated for Phase Two of the Conrak facility itself. Is that still something that's going to be happening in the future? Uh, I understand it was somewhat thirty, forty additional acres, thereabout potentially, or, so what are the future plans there?
So, I don't have the details for your, the second part of your question, so we would have to get back to you on that particular bit of information. It certainly doesn't have impact on the redemption of these outstanding bonds, because the bonds themselves are just paying off outstanding customer facility charges, but we can certainly get back with you on that. And then, we certainly recognize the fact that the, uh, ATL West parking deck is, has been built and serves the, uh, community, uh, that is at the GIC station, and we, as the City of Atlanta and the Department of Aviation, are absorbing an appropriate level of cost that is associated with the transit between the airport station and the GICC station.
Now, that parking deck, is that still majority airport employees essentially?
Well, it serves both airport employees, but really, it's more for passengers.
So, your percentage ratio, passengers to employees, what would you estimate that would be?
Uh, I don't estimate, and I don't know the answer to that, but I can certainly get it back to you.
Okay. Well, you know, we, we were paying a certain amount going on, year after year after year, which was pretty steady, and my understanding is that there was a bit of a spike here that we're looking at. Is that, is that my understanding? Ed?
Yes, sir, so I, I had Spencer Sane, who works with me, do an analysis on the bill, and, um, there's something called a Crystal Mover, and their expenses have gone sky-high. So, what I've asked the city manager to do is set up a Zoom call with us and staff to go over Spencer's analysis, and then get back with Brian and go over that data. And, uh, what you're trying to angle, I think, is our percentage share should have gone down when that West parking deck got, uh, built. And I'm analyzing the numbers to try to get with Brian and get you back a report about all that.
Well, that was gonna be my thinking, when, when, when you said you were gonna build it. And we're, we're expanding the campus as well, we got, looks like we have two other hotels coming on board here pretty soon, which is gonna spread the share of the cost for the APM mover, you know, repair, maintenance, and upkeep, so on and so forth, but I'm not familiar with this Crystal Mover, so this is a new outfit that's handling the, the repairs? Is that what this is, that is?
Crystal Movers is the organization or the company that, uh, maintains the Skytrain facility.
So, that's part of the increase?
Yeah, so their, their amounts have gone up pretty significantly, and I don't know why, but I'll get the answer. So that increase has caused our number to go higher, even though our percentage is about the same.
Okay, so our percentages are the same?
Yes.
But, uh, everybody's paying more, the airport side than us, is that right?
Yes, because the Crystal Mover expense is so much higher.
Okay, well, where are you all at, at with Crystal Mover, with, with things going so high? How, how do you reckon that, or in terms of, did they explain it to you thoroughly, where you could understand why the percentages are the same?
He learned it from me the first time.
Okay, and I guess, in a sense, I guess we both need to hear from Crystal Mover to see what, what, what exactly is going on in terms of, you know, price spikes. I mean, there, there, there no real big crisis to speak of, I mean, you know, you know, we had some issues and bumps in the road, but, uh, do they have a good reason why things are going up so, so significantly higher, or?
Yeah, I mean, uh, you, uh, on the specific question related to Crystal Movers, we would have to get back to you on that. Certainly, any costed increase that we look at and scrutinize pretty closely, but specifically, I'd have to get back on that one.
Okay, Ed, city manager, what's y'all's recommendation?
This is, wait, hold on, one second, because the, the issue that, hold on, the issue that we're here to talk about is, Mr. Wall, can you state that one more time?
The redemption.
Right, and I think that's what he's asking, so, the issue here is the, is us sending the redemption notices to the existing bondholders of the oh-six bonds, so that they can refinance them. And it is my recommendation that you do that.
Okay, so, and if we move forward, that we could still get the answers from Crystal?
Yes.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Totally separate issues. Councilmember Gay?
I just had a couple of quick questions, thank you for your recommendation. Who are they refinancing the bond debt with?
You. So, they're, they have a team of investment bankers, Juan Pittman, sitting in the audience, is their financial advisor, he's there, Ed Wall. I imagine they'll hire a team of investment bankers, they normally do it in negotiated sale, but I don't think y'all hired all those folks yet, have you?
And approximately, how much bond debt are they?
So, uh, they sent me the preliminary documents, I reviewed them, they haven't set a principal amount yet, I think they're adding new money to the money to pay off these bonds to do renovations at the Conrak facility, cause he said it was fifteen years old, they're adding money to it to renovate the Conrak facility. They haven't set a principal amount yet, but they're gonna borrow more than it takes to pay off these bonds.
Can you give us a ballpark?
I, I don't know.
A ball, how much, how much bond debt do we do?
So, we issued two-hundred-and-eleven million in oh-six for Conrak, and twenty-one million, nine-eighty. I don't know how much is outstanding, maybe about half of it.
And the only other question I ask, when they go through the process of refinancing their bond debt, I guess to Councilman Carn's question, no payments that we currently have in our contract agreement, none of that gets interfered with, correct?
No, sir. This refinancing has nothing to do with that, that's gonna be a separate issue we gotta negotiate with.
This isn't gonna affect our bond rating?
It does not, sir.
Okay.
And I just have one other question.
Councilmember Gay, go right ahead.
May, may not be related, but there are also conversations about this same group coming to us about paying for part of the expansion that he just said he want to refinance the bonds for, right? Let, let me finish.
Yes, sir.
So what I'm hearing, without being involved in Zoom calls, is they're coming up with some number at some point to come back before us, to ask us to take on some of that debt. Are we giving away our bargaining power by just willy-nilly giving them redemptive notice? Because we don't know what they gonna come back and ask us to support.
So, um, there are two separate issues, and I hear your point, and the point's well-made. Um, they're gonna ask us for money to pay for, uh, improvements to our station. These bonds were sold for Conrak, the bonds they're paying off, so they're two totally separate issues. And I would recommend to you that we not hold the redemption notices hostage, and we just negotiate with them in good faith on the amounts of money they want for our station, the renovations. They're gonna tell me what they're spending on it, and you all, as a group, are gonna decide if you think that money is well-spent and worthwhile doing. And then they want us to pay for a percentage share of their improvements to the Skytrain from the airport station to our station. And I have to work with them and with staff to get back to you the numbers and what that means. And I don't know the answer to that yet, but I would, uh, like for you to have these two issues to be to, totally separate issues.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. Well, we have to, we have to bond money to, to participate with this increase.
We could either do that, or they could bond it for us, like they did the renovation.
Why can't we put whatever that increase that they gonna come at us as part of their bond?
So we could, but they'd be anticipating us to pay it. So right now, we pay eight-hundred-thousand dollars a year for the operation and maintenance costs, there's no capital. If they financed it on our behalf, that number's gonna go up. And so what I want to do is, right now, that eight-hundred thousand, we share it with people around that College Park station, businesses pay the portion of that. And so I think we're only paying about forty percent of it. Whatever we decide is our capital cost for our station and the Skytrain, then I want to negotiate with the businesses that are around there, who are currently under contract, that's sharing the cost of the operations and maintenance, I'm gonna ask them to share the cost of the capital, so that your percentage share would be the same as what you're paying on the O and N.
So we pass it on to them as they, as we, as, with our partners?
That, that's my, that's my point.
And the forty percent of our share is gonna decrease as these two hotels come up the next eighteen months as well.
Yes.
So, you know, we, we keep moving, okay, all right.
You good, Councilmember Gay?
But some, some of this increase could, it, in a sense, it could be an anticipatory increase for what's, what's coming, so I can get it, but partners with the airport is a partnership, we, you know, continue on.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed, thanks for coming out.
Go.
Agenda item K, consideration of an action on a request to approve the memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the City of College Park and Fulton County School System. This MOU is in support of Fulton County Schools' first day and College Park's Kids, Kids Fest back-to-school events.
Is there a motion?
Close.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Agenda item L, consideration of, of an action on a request to approve the annual citywide events calendar. This item is being presented by Antoinette Govan, Director of Communications and Public Information.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie, is there a second?
Second with discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn, there's always discussion. Ms., Ms. Govan, did you want to approach and talk a little bit about calendar?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem and councilmembers. Um, this, uh, motion, this recommendation is an attempt to get the Communications Department some order, where we can have some time to plan for events, and actually do some educational campaigns around these significant events that the city sponsors. So we're hopeful that if we can get some things on the calendar that we know are there and will not change, will not move, it will give us time to be able to plan ahead, and also deal with the day-to-day things that we have to deal with.
All right. Are there questions for Ms. Govan? Councilmember.
You had discussion.
Hold on, okay, all right, we're just gonna go right down the line. Mayor Portem?
Oh, uh, thank you for this, and, you know, this just, basically, this gives us a framework to start with, because we can still add, uh, citywide events as we go, but at least we, I like what you're doing in terms of getting that focused, so that was it.
If we have the time to plan in advance, when we do have those pop-up events, we're better able to deal with those things, because we've already been planning for those other things, so they won't fall by the wayside. Things will already have been done to make sure those things take place, and we'll be able to jump in and deal with those that come up, uh, spontaneously.
And I still, Antoinette, would, would like to see, and C manager as well, um, us really putting together a calendar, so that as we all are planning events, we can see who has an event, so that we're not trying to do three things at the same time. I do like to support my fellow legislators.
I concur.
Uh, and governing body members, and the different projects that are going on in the city. As Holly Rodriguez said, we are one College Park, and so, but we do things in different areas, so it would really, so I want to thank you for this, but I'm also looking for us to create something where, as I'm getting ready to plan an event, I can go on a citywide calendar too, and see what we're for, what three, two, one are doing as much as we possibly can, and the mayor. So, thank you.
Councilmember Carn?
Thank you, Ms. Govan, I know this is something that's sorely needed in terms of getting everybody on one page, and getting a consolidated activities calendar, at least for the major stuff.
Yes.
So I, I definitely get what you're trying to do, and, uh, I definitely think it's necessary, so we can take a look at everything together. Um, one thing I will say, and, and city manager, I, I do believe that combining more of our events probably would be wise. Uh, there's potentially some, 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 uh, some combinations that we can do in, 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 in terms of, uh, some of the stuff that we're doing year-round. But, uh, there's one event that we, that we don't have on here that we try to do, that's a how-to-do business in College Park.
Okay.
Which is a, it's much small, it's a smaller event, it's not a major event, it's not a heavy-expense event, maybe six, seven thousand dollars, uh, and this is something that we do, uh, uh, Ms. Miller, I think you were here when we did the one at the arena, is that correct?
Yes, she was there, she spoke.
What was that title again?
I'm sorry.
What was the title of the event?
Generally, we do that in, in the month of October.
Okay.
So, so, uh, we want to make sure that, that, that's a, I think that's an important one. Obviously, it involves residents, but it also involves, you know, kind of regional, in terms of making sure our doors open for business, and a lot of folks think that you can't do business with government entities, that you have some kind of special division for that, and that the general public is not privy to that, so I think it's really important. But, uh, this is good, we got all of this to take, take in, but at some point, we gotta start looking at combining some of these events, I think, so it's working more together and unifying, uh, events, so, yeah.
Councilmember Arnold?
So, I, I do have a question about the, um, this particular list. Where did it come from?
We met with, uh, department heads last week, or a week and a half ago. Uh, this has come together in probably the last three weeks or a month or so, um, us putting this together, so we did try to meet with department heads and get, uh, many of their events, because again, we support you guys as well as the city itself, and so, this was a collection of us meeting with them. We knew that this was just a start, that we didn't have everything on here, but we tried to go through the things that we know, and then meet with the department heads about the events that they have, and combine it, that's how this came together.
Right, because the senior event that we have in February.
Okay.
Um, that is put on by, uh, the Police Department and Councilman Gay, which is a huge event, is not on the list, so when I first saw the list, my first thought was, where did this come from, because it's not comprehensive.
Okay.
So, I, I guess I, I'm trying to figure out, is the goal here to find out about the major events that is going to take a collective effort of staff and all of the other departments to have a calendar for this, or is the, the goal here to have a list of events that we, the elected officials, are hosting?
I think it's both. Um, we wanted to start with citywide, because again, that encompasses everyone that we support. Um, and that gives us a foundation of, I, I personally like to plan three months in advance, quarterly planning, and when we have things that we know happen at a certain time of year, we are able to begin to do those things annually and get a rhythm within the team to be able to cover these events, because we know what's gonna take place, what the needs are, um, the changes that may or may not occur this year. And so, again, this is a beginning list for us, but we want to get in a rhythm and a habit of us having a calendar of events, um, that will help to organize our efforts as a communications department, and also enable us to support you guys the best way that we can. But there are also missed opportunities for us to do educational campaigns with a lot of our signature events, and that is very important for me, um, as a communications director, um, part of what we do, anything it should be to inform, educate, or to, um, engage. And I feel like a lot of what we're doing is chasing and promoting, and we don't have the ability to plan campaigns, educational campaigns, for our residents and businesses. And that's what I'd like to try and do.
Yeah, so, I would say, and I, and you know, on putting on the record, that there was no conversation with Ward Three, so I don't see any events for, uh, Ward Three. And, and so, I would like to have a further conversation before, um, committing or, uh, voting on the, on the list. There, I mean, there's actually nothing on the list here for Ward Three.
Okay. Councilmember Gay?
A couple of things, ma'am. Uh, going forward, uh, these things have already been approved by mayor and council, so that's already an official, uh, vote on what's official meant. So, I would recommend communications should start there first, because that, what we voted on previously helped all of the events, some of whom, Councilwoman Arnold mentioned it. So, we might need to reverse, someone might need to get a motion back, table this or something, because you're missing s- some events that we've already voted for to the record.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Mayor, may I?
Uh, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Yes, um, my understanding that this listing was citywide events, 'cause I don't have my Ward One events on here, and, and I'm not, I don't have a problem with it. That's why I was saying what I said to you. When I look at this, these are the citywide that all of us are doing together, that not, I mean, I do know Kids Fest and Boys to Men, those two are pretty much.
Citywide.
They're citywide, yeah, but we do have a council member that ki- kind of leads that, whereas the rest of these are pretty much city staff-oriented. So, that's what my understanding of this agenda item was, is just to get us all on the same page in terms of citywide, and that's why I was saying that I'd like to see us create a calendar, as Councilwoman Arnold was saying, that would have, so we would be aware of Ward Three, uh, initiated events, Ward Four initiated events, Ward Two, and Ward One. Yeah, 'cause I, I mean, y'all know I do, I do two events at least a, a month. I mean, none of my stuff is on here, which is fine.
And you are, this was a citywide event, and we started with July, so some of the events, you know, we did just have Juneteenth, and, um, I know that that's in your ward, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Arnold. And so, it wasn't the intention for us to omit any events. We were kinda just, it was a short timeframe for us, because we wanted to get it on this, um, for this council meeting. And so, the, the attempt was never to omit anything. Those events that have happened already, they're on there, but this is what we are presenting for the rest of the year. So, um, again, we can circle back with each of you and, and make sure that we have everything covered, but this was just, like I said, in the last three weeks, um, we were asked to put this together and present, and so, this is what we came up with. But we wanna make sure that we include everyone.
Can you reverse your motion and let it get a couple?
Madam Clerk, that's who made the motion.
Mayor Protem, and the second was Councilman Carron.
Uh, Mayor Protem, are you, um, are you prepared to withdraw the motion?
I don't see the need to withdraw it if these events are going to happen, if we're approving these events, but I would not be bringing this motion forth, and as I said, as the only events, that this becomes a skeleton, so that you, as a communications director, can kind of get a little bit of a bird's eye view.
Yes.
So, if the council wants to vote it down, that's fine, but I, my understanding, when I made the motion, is that these are city-designated events that are citywide, but not necessarily, but it's not, I mean, it's not that we can't come up tomorrow and say, add this on.
That's true.
But if my colleagues, you know, except, I'm not gonna withdraw my motion, but my colleagues don't wanna vote, that's fine.
No problem. Councilmember Carron?
Okay, we want, we need to add some stuff to this list.
Yeah, that's all we need to add, that's all.
Yeah, this is not, this is not by any means a finalized list, as you guys can tell, it starts in July.
Hold on, hold on, wait. Councilmember Carron has the floor.
Well, in fairness, we had this list here, and I second with discussion, but I added a lit, an event that was omitted as well.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you know, I, I don't wanna be able to add events, and no one else be able to add the events that they would like. Now, I have regular community in-house events that aren't citywide events too, but, but I don't have a, you know, I don't have a citywide event that's not on here per se. I did add that one, but I, I think if anybody wants to add some stuff on here, I mean, let's add it on, so that every, so we have everything, 'cause the whole purpose is so that your communications team can keep up with what we got coming down the pikes two, three months in advance, right?
And, and if you so choose that we take this back, and I present to you a list from January, even the ones we've already covered, going into next year, I, I have no problem doing that.
Why don't we add?
Okay, hold on, wait. Councilmember Carron still has the floor.
I'm saying, I don't wanna add something on, and then someone else not be able to...
It is a working draft.
Okay, what I'm saying is, Councilwoman Arnold, I don't wanna add something on, and then someone not be able to add something on, you know, here. So, if we're not adding on, then, then we won't add anything.
So, I can think of, I can...
Councilmember, Councilmember, hold on one minute. All right, so we have spent more time on this than, than spending nearly nine million dollars on the consent agenda, and I think Ms. Govan has said on multiple occasions that this is a working document. So, if you don't want to, if you want to continue working on it and not vote on it, then do so. If you want to vote on it and work on it and bring it back for more stuff, that's fine too. But we're, we're kind of, we, we're, we're going back and forth here. If, I think, just vote it up or vote it down, she can bring it back with more stuff.
So, Mayor, I'd like to re, I would like to amend my motion.
Hold on, wait, hold on, I'm still, I'm, hold on one second.
I know you wanted to move on, so I was trying to move it on.
I know, but I was still talking, and I'm happy to acknowledge you when I'm finished. But let's just go ahead and, and make a decision on this, because if, if, if it's incomplete and we don't like it, great. If we don't, fine.
So, therefore, I would...
So, Mayor Protem?
I'd like to amend the motion that we accept this as a working document, that we will continue that, so that the items that are here are, we approve of these items. However, it's a working document that we will continue to submit information to, to communications and the city manager's office.
All right. Councilmember Carron, do you accept the, that amendment?
I modify my second.
No, it's a, it's a second, it's a second on her motion.
If I could please finish, I appreciate it.
No, sir. I'm just asking the question, is, do you, do you accept that?
I'd like to speak.
I understand, but in, in just, in action, Councilmember, just, do you, okay, all right. Mayor Protem has made a, made a motion. Is there a second to her motion? Is there a second?
Again.
Is there a second?
Mayor, what was you, uh, Mayor Protem?
My motion was just that we accept the events here as a working document that we will continue, because even if we decided next month and you come back again, um, if you come back again, we still may find some things that are missing. But the, the object, that this is a working document that we will continue to add events on to.
All right, so is there a second to that? Hold, Councilmember, please, is there a second to the motion?
I've got a modified motion of that.
Okay, that is not what I'm asking at this time, sir. Is there a second to her motion? That motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
I, I, I have, I have another motion in here.
All right, Councilmember.
But I would, but I would like to say something first here.
Councilmember, I'm asking for the motion.
Okay, here's what I'm asking for. I wanna make sure that everybody's stuff is included if we're going to put together religious...
Councilmember, Councilmember, I'm just asking you respectfully, what is your motion?
Well, first thing I'd like to do...
No, the first thing is the motion. Councilmember, and, Councilmember?
If I'm allowed to say it.
Please go ahead. What is your motion?
All right. First of all, I'd like to, uh, with...
No, sir.
My motion would be not, my motion would be not to add, uh, the item that I wanted to add until we all can take another look at this document and add it collectively, where we can collect our thoughts in terms of what we wanna add. I don't wanna tack on something onto this when there are others that need to add some things onto this as well, when we haven't gotten a complete document with input from everybody.
All right, so is there a second to that motion?
So, I, I, does it, do y'all understa- I want, I want everybody to have time to get, put the input in.
Councilmember, your motion was to not add what you wanted to add, so...
Well, that's my, I wanna withdraw that off of the list, because I want everybody to have a chance to input on the list.
Okay, so is there a second to that motion? That motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
Motion to table it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Gay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion?
Last thing I'll say, okay, Ms. Govan, we, we'll table this, but we do have a work, you do have a working list to start with.
But we haven't approved it.
But again, it hasn't been approved, but you do have a working list of, of definite events to start with at least, but we wanna put, add, we wanna get everybody's input, so that everyone can collect their thoughts in terms of what they wanna see on the calendar.
Yes, and, and...
I just wanna make sure everybody's, you know, got, had a chance.
A quick note, we had three collections. We had a citywide event, we have mayor and council events, and then we have council meetings and town halls. So, we've had it split up like this, but we were asked to present the citywide list, and so, that's what we've done. But we can continue to work on this as long as it takes, where everybody feels they're included. We just wanna make sure that we be, are able to support everyone as best we can.
Thank you, Ms. Govan. Any further discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
City attorneys report.
Item ten M.
Oh, my apologies, Madam Mayor. Item ten M. Resolution of City of College Park, Georgia. The city authorizing participat- participation in an amicus brief in the Chang versus City of Milton appeal pending for the Georgia Supreme Court.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carron. Always discussion, go right ahead.
City attorney, city manager, I still think this is something we should've done in executive session, but, uh, uh, you know, in light of the changes, I, I do support it, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous amongst those present.
Next item, item eleven, city attorneys report.
No report to see.
Item twelve, city managers report.
Mayor and council, I submitted my report. However, I would like to thank staff and a special thanks to our power department for the hard work this week. Thank you.
Item thirteen, report of mayor and council.
All right, so, uh, in regard to the Eva Thomas Bearcats, I do think that we can and we should continue to recognize them. Uh, they received a proclamation several years ago commemorating their historic win, and I agree that we can do more. And so, I am hopeful that we can have some further discussion on that, and, uh, perhaps have that for a workshop session, uh, in the next meeting or the second meeting in August, depending on how the, the calendar looks. But I, I think that we have an opportunity to, to show our appreciation, our support, and recognize greatness in our city, and we should do that and step up. And I know that they said that they were not recognized then, but this is now, and we can right that wrong. So, I think we should move forward on that, and I'd ask that we have that discussion on a workshop session, depending on how things, how things go with, uh, with, with the way things are lining up for the fourth or the, the upcoming one. I was working out at Conley Rec Center today, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about something that is such an everyday thing for our folks that protect and service, but Chief Taylor was there, making sure that the AED device was operational, and that's just what the fire department does. They make sure that we're safe even when we're not thinking about it. And Chief was there, I'm, I'm assuming, making sure the batteries were charged and all that good stuff, uh, but we have a number of AED, uh, units across the city, and we expect that if somebody has a cardiac situation, that they will be armed and ready to help us in that. And that is the stuff that we don't always see and that we don't always recognize, but thank you to Chief Ron Taylor, uh, to the entire staff of our fire department for just doing what you do day in and day out, because there are so many things that are unseen that all of our staff does on a regular basis, and I just, just wanted to give them a shout out for that. But since we last met, had the privilege of connecting with some of our valued seniors at the Longino Complex during a morning community meeting, and we provided citywide updates and utility services information, wanna thank, uh, Mr. Richardson, um, our community police officers for coming out, and most importantly, we listened to the, the concerns of our residents. And, uh, also wanna thank Chelsea Walker and the Housing Authority team for their participation, uh, and just making sure that we are connecting and, and making sure that everyone's concerns are, are met. Um, also had the opportunity to see Councilmember Arnold at Summersby, um, as we, I was headed in and, or I was headed out, and she was headed in, uh, to connect with our residents on West Fayetteville Road in one of our newest, uh, developments. I know that you got a opportunity to engage, um, a little bit more than I did, uh, but it was a great opportunity to, um, hear directly from residents about some of the concerns that they have in the city, and to brag on our fantastic, uh, park and recreation, uh, our park facilities and our recreational programs, because there were a lot of questions about that while I was there, and, uh, we were able to brag on that quite a bit. I'm still welcoming sign-ups for the Mayor for a Day program, uh, to engage our youth, to show them what it's like to sort of sit in this seat a little bit. So, if you are interested, uh, feel free to reach out on my website, mayorbianca.com, and learn more. And I had the opportunity to join the Atlanta Realtors Association for a South Fulton County Town Hall recently. Uh, Councilman, um, excuse me, Councilwoman Foster Ral was there as well from South Fulton, and we talked, uh, with all the Realtors about how our government and our private sector partners can collaborate for meaningful housing situations in our region. We know there's a housing crisis. We know that there are opportunities for us to do better, and we are having some of those conversations and those discussions, and I think a couple of them actually signed up for my one-on-ones tomorrow, so I'm looking forward to continuing those conversations. And I was also honored to serve as a panelist and represent College Park for the Women's Wellness Brunch hosted by a hundred black men of South Atlanta. It was a conversation that went deep. It was great. We had, uh, Councilmember from South Fulton present, Ujama Construction, uh, and an attorney from South Fulton as well, and we were all able to just have a very frank, open conversation about some of the issues that women face, uh, in the workplace, and how we all need to make sure that we're taking care of ourselves. And just got back from Columbus, Ohio, where the National League of Cities had their summer board leadership meeting, and had an opportunity to engage with, um, not only the Board of Directors, of which I am a member, uh, but all of the leaders in the various, um, committees that NLC has. We got a chance to see the hometown of the president of the National League of Cities, Steve Patterson, in Athens, Ohio, and got the chance to learn more about some of the innovative things that they're doing, and I saw an amazing app that I think that we might be able to use, uh, not only in College Park, but in the entire ATL Airport District to highlight some of our history, so I'm very excited about that. And lastly, I am deeply honored to share that, uh, last month, I was elected president of the Georgia Municipal Association during our annual convention in Savannah. And the achievement represents not only a personal honor, but a real trust that Georgia's achievement represents not only a personal honor, but a real trust that Georgia's 537 cities have placed in me, and I am so excited about amplifying the collective voice of Georgia's municipalities and championing, championing our shared vision across the state for stronger communities. The role presents an unprecedented opportunity to bridge gaps, dream big, and deliver tangible results for the communities that we serve. And so, I look forward to continuing this vital work in the service of our residents and our community's bright future. So, without further ado, Mayor Protim.
Are we still on the five-minute limit for reports? Because I know we got an email about five minutes.
Three.
Oh, it's.
Yes.
Five minutes?
Yes, Mayor Protim.
It's five, but that wasn't three minutes just now, that was five minutes. It's five minutes.
It is five minutes.
Okay, mine is exactly five minutes. Can you enlarge it, please? Kelly, can you enlarge it and start from the beginning?
Yes, one moment.
I'm going to have to start all over again with sound. Can you go back? Thank you.
Excellent.
Brazilia, China, evil, community, home.
I believe that this Memorial Commons sends a message to our community that everybody belongs, everybody matters.
This Memorial Commons, creating a gathering place and a place to remember veterans that becomes a hub for activity. So, this occasion honors the past, but also sets us up for more of what makes College Park special.
Being that close to the airport, having the, the GICC, having the arena, I think we will be the crown jewel of the South Side. It's one of those places where it has potential to be a model of what a city can really look like with diversity.
We were, we are, and we will be. This is Mayor Protim Jamel McKenzie. On July 5th, we officially named College Park Memorial Commons, and we dedicated our new gazebo. During this time, we honored Mr. Garland Watkins and Ms. Jane Randolph, Gloria Abdullah, Brian Granville, Dr. Lamise Littleton, and Bill Crane for the contributions that they have made in our community. This was a really special day, and it was wonderful to have persons from the Governor's Office to the Commissioner's Office to our Congress, uh, and our state representatives present with us. And on June 28th, we had our second senior springo with tons of fun. I am Mayor Protim Jamel McKenzie, City of College Park, and I want to welcome you to I represented the City of College Park at the Regional Assembly of Public Officials, also at the Sofoo Cook-Off that was held a couple of weeks ago, and I served as the delegate, the voting delegate for MEAD Tower at that meeting on last week where we elected, uh, new board members. In addition, I represented the city at the Martha's, uh, College Park, uh, Market Celebration on last week. Our Summer Youth Civic Leadership Academy began on July 8th under the direction of veteran educator Eleanor Cornelius and Woodward Academy graduate Ms. Zari Carr.
And on Friday, I stood with our College Park Police Department team as we named Walker's Way after Lieutenant Shakia Walker.
Ward 1 update. Check out our new sign at the Brady Recreation Center, and we've got some new vegetation as well. We've been going through the community, and we've been cleaning up of our Ward 1 area, specifically Main Street. Want to thank our Buildings and Grounds Team who actually was out this past weekend pressure washing the sidewalks and just helping us to keep College Park beautiful. We've also been visiting several areas of our ward, looking at trees and sidewalks and streets and seeing how we can build a better College Park.
And you are invited to join us this Friday at the Conley Rec Center for our Back-to-School Bash.
Our very first golf camp in conjunction with the Ludacris Foundation ended in the beginning of July, and, uh, it was a wonderful opportunity for all of our campers in the city to be introduced to the fundamentals of golf. We rewarded the students at the Tracy Wyatt Golf Camp certificates and a pizza party for amazing behavior, but we also gave every single, uh, campsite a certificate of participation. Thank you to everyone.
Golfing! Golfing! Golfing!
This is Mayor Protim Jamel McKenzie building College Park better.
Councilmember Karn?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the first thing, uh, I want to definitely congratulate you, uh, on your selection as President of the Georgia Municipal Association. It is a first for College Park, it is a very big deal for the city.
It's not a first, actually.
And I really want to, uh, I was there at your, uh, reception, which was really wonderful. Um, we're all excited about it, and, uh, we're all very proud, and, uh, we know you're going to represent us well with GMA.
Councilmember, I, I do want to.
I, I did hear you.
The TO in Smith was GMA president, and I don't want to take anything away from him for that, so.
Right, absolutely. Well, second, uh, President of GMA in College Park's history, and I believe the first female, obviously, uh, so, congratulations once again, and, uh, uh, GMA was, was, was a great convention as always. Um, I wanted to send, uh, I was at the Lieutenant Walker's dedication, uh, chief, that was put together very well. Um, I had the opportunity to meet, uh, Lieutenant Walker's family, his mom and dad and the brothers. Uh, a wonderful family. Uh, I think that dedication was, uh, was very appropriate, and I think they really appreciated what it was we did for them. Uh, speaking of street dedications, City Manager, uh, we have, uh, Jesse A. Dent Boulevard, which is, uh, one of our first streets named for one of our, uh, council members. There was a storm, uh, a few months back, and a tree did fall, and it fell on the street sign there at the corner of, uh, is that Arndale, Arndale and Jesse Dent Boulevard, and it did bend the sign, uh, a bit, the street sign. So, I got a call from Mrs. Dent, who still lives on the street, and, uh, if we could see, if we could get that sign replaced, uh, that would, that would really be good. Uh, so, we want to make sure we, we work on that. Um, I got quite a few things here. Uh, our Fulton First Day Campaign, it's gaining some momentum. As you all know, we've been partnering with Fulton County Schools for different initiatives. Uh, our educational outreach and book program has been going very, very well. I'm seeing kids with the books that we've been distributing in the community. Uh, we have many, many, many more books. I think I left books for everyone in terms of summer distribution, but I have, we have plenty more books we want to get out, uh, throughout August and throughout the fall. Uh, if we keep the community, uh, in terms of literacy rates with our young people, that's going to help us out tremendously. Um, this campaign and initiative for the discount for the August utility bills, uh, we're going to be rolling that out. Uh, I think it is in our utility bills, uh, as well, so people are getting noticed, but, uh, it's hard to get word out with this type of stuff, uh, so we want to work as much as we can with communications to make sure, uh, residents are aware of it. We had a great, uh, homebuyer seminar that we held this Saturday at the Conley Center with Mr. Jefferson and his group. Uh, there are a lot of folks that do rent that would like, uh, the steps and the guidelines to step into ownership, um, which is, uh, uh, you know, the American dream still, and, uh, there are challenges in it that hadn't been there before, but, uh, there was some good guidance and good information and good education for residents there. Last week, we also unveiled our, our second summer harvest, uh, for our Camp Creek Community Garden, and folks, we had a bumper crop of tomatoes, of cucumbers, of strawberries. We've got corn, we've got green peppers, okra, uh, and it's going very, very well. We did maybe hundreds of bags in our community, and, you know, I said to myself, I'm hoping that the community takes to this and, you know, starts to look at healthier lifestyles, and a lot of my apartments say, well, we don't know if the residents are going to want all the vegetables, and, you know, they were gone within minutes everywhere we stopped. And, uh, that is a good thing in terms of better health outcomes. We're hoping for better health outcomes, and I've never been in a situation where you could go up the street and get some fresh fruits and vegetables whenever you needed to, uh, with an open community garden, so that is definitely a plus, and we want to try to increase that and expand that as much as we can. The multifamily task force, that is something that we had initiated here a couple of years ago. It was slowed down a couple of times, it was stopped a couple of times, uh, and then in 2024, uh, the support was here, uh, to continue that and to work towards eliminating the blight in our community. Uh, City Manager, we want to keep that process going, and those meetings are so very, very important if we're going to turn a corner in terms of some of the areas of the city. We're making progress in a lot of places, but we have got to get that back up and going. Uh, this was spearheaded by myself and Councilwoman Arnold, uh, particularly because between the two of us, most of our multifamily communities were in wards two and wards three. We share a lot of the same issues. Uh, we were involved, every two weeks, we had a meeting with City Manager, Code Enforcement, Public Works, Police, Fire, to look at these issues and figure out how we can crack down on these issues. We would do sweeps, we would do all the things that raise the standards in these communities, so we want to make sure we continue those and keep going with making sure we have those meetings, so we want to try to set those meetings once every two weeks. Um, and I think once you kind of see a few of them and how we're doing them, we can start to really put some attention in terms of code enforcement and things we have to do. Multifamily includes apartment communities and motels in particular. Apartment communities and motels, we've got some substandard situations that are completely, totally unacceptable, and I do not believe they will change, you know, in a whole unless we really focus in and target those two-week meetings. I think that's just so very, very important. Um, situation out in Cranbrook. Um, you know, homelessness is something that a lot of cities just are going to have to face front for at the end of the day. A lot of the times, it's an issue that cities try to sweep up under the rug. We cannot afford to sweep that up under the rug. Uh, no city can at this point. Now, there was a time where we had, there, there virtually was not any homelessness in College Park to speak of in terms of noticeable. There were people that were living month to month, that were living week to week. Some people I've seen that were, you know, in their vehicles and, and, and traveling and so on and so forth, and in motels, but it's becoming a little more obvious, and as a city, it can't be an afterthought. You know, we really have to look at what some of the other cities have faced the fact that they had to do and not, you know, what you deem important is what you put in your city budget. And folks, we got to look at some point here really soon, we've got to put homelessness in this city budget in terms of mental health care, supplemental care, and things that we can do, uh, to really kind of face that issue, because it's not going to, you know, improve unless we try to figure out how to address it. And we've got to address it financially in a sense as well. Um, part of my community enhancements, I want to put towards some of this issue. Uh, so I want to definitely look at that, uh, because we can make progress and do great development, but if we're not helping out the least of these, you know, we're only going so far in terms of overall progress, so I want to do what I can. Uh, I'm a board member of Concerned Black Clergy of Metropolitan Atlanta, and they were formed for homelessness, uh, was one of their big tenants in terms of things that they work towards and do. In terms of the multifamily task force, we hired four additional code enforcement ambassadors for a specific reason, and a big part of that was multifamily and motels in particular. So, we got to kind of realign in terms of what we want to be doing and why we hired those additional folks to address those concerns. So, I see them out and about in the community, but these week, meetings every two weeks are to focus those issues. Um, a couple of other things, you know, we helped several Fourth of July community meetings and cookouts. Uh, those were really good. We got a chance to update our community on programs and the initiatives we were working on. Um, in regards to the, uh, RSW contract, um, we did vote to contract on-call maintenance and upkeep services with, with RSW. Now, they were established as a preferred vendor for certain items and things. Uh, so, we do want to continue that relationship. Uh, we do have preferred vendors, that does not mean mandatory 1,000%, no exceptions, of course, but we want to make sure that we are honoring that contract unless we're eliminating that contract, which I don't think we are, but, uh, you know, we had spoke about having some kind of clarification there where we don't want any group or individuals or businesses to feel like, you know, we're not, we're rejecting them in a sense or whatever have you. So, I didn't want that to come the right, the wrong way, and we did speak about that, so we're hoping you're going to still do some correspondence to kind of clarify some of that in terms of, uh, where there won't be any misunderstanding there. Uh, I know the work that they do, they've done good work in the city. I haven't heard any complaints from department heads and whatnot that have been working, uh, with those outfits, so we want to continue to keep those good relationships. I want to send my condolences out to Mr. John Azar. Um, he had a major loss in his family, uh, so we want to send our condolences out to him and his family. Uh, he's been a longtime partner in the City of College Park. Uh, as far as with the Bearcats from 1969, uh, I may agree with you, I would like us to right that wrong. Uh, I'm intending on placing that on the next agenda item, uh, list, uh, in terms of making that right if we can, uh, do something in terms of restoring some recognition for them. Uh, they mentioned they did not get their championship rings. I want us to look at some replicas for, uh, the remaining living, uh, folks there that participated in that history for the City of College Park and recognize and try to honor that history. I think that's, uh, very, very, very important. Last thing I'll say, uh, Power Department, we want to thank you for your hard work over the weekends, uh, with the outages. I've got a lot of calls about the outages. Um, I do want to look at an arborist contract for the city to take a look at our tree canopies, uh, and I want us to make sure that we take a look, and particularly this year, because we have four or five major things going on with our tree canopies. The first thing is the, the PMG, uh, 60-acre residential portion of Sixth West. There's going to be a lot of tree removal and activity going on there. We want an arborist to take a look in terms of old growth and trees that we want to keep in terms of working with that developer. The GICC Convention Center Tree Removal, uh, we're going to be, uh, doing some tree removal there, uh, you know, on a major scale in order to save our, uh, uh, rite of ways, our tree canopies, as well as our sidewalks, uh, within the GICC. Uh, we're looking at some tree removal with the Botanical Gardens as well, potentially this year here. Uh, a lot of our power outages are caused by fallen trees as the fifth element to, I think we need an arborist to take a look at all of these processes in terms of some tree expertise, uh, for this year going into next year. Uh, so, as well as the potential of a city park going on, so we want to make sure we're, we're, we're keeping the right trees and the ones that you want and making sure that we don't just tear down too much. So, I think that's going to be very important that we do that arborist contract, so I want to make sure that we look at that. Um, so that's all I got, I guess that's enough there. So, thank you all.
Councilmember Arnold?
Thank you. As we close this evening, I want to take a moment to reflect on the incredible momentum that we've built together in Ward 3 and across the city. We made history this summer with our first ever. We made history this summer with our first-ever Juneteenth Parade on Godby Road on that corridor. It was an unforgettable, vibrant celebration that brought the community together in a powerful display of unity, culture, and pride. And we received national attention, which reminds us that, you know, it's important that not only do we honor our heritage, but we also create a space for connection. And once we do that, we see that that connection will inspire beyond our city limits. So I want to thank again the city and all of the volunteers that participated in that celebration. We also celebrated progress with the groundbreaking of the Blue Sky Development and investment in affordable housing and a commitment to growth that reflects the hopes of many of our families in our growing area. This project represents what happens when we plan with purpose and act with intention. And in the spirit of transparency, the mayor mentioned earlier about the conversations that we had at Summersby, where we addressed concerns of our neighbors there with compassion and accountability. There was also the opportunity to speak to individuals about their voter status. I asked the individuals that lived there whether or not if they were registered to vote. There were several hands that went up. And then I said, okay, well, that's good. But did you update your registration when you moved to this particular complex? And several of the hands went down. There was also a conversation this weekend with Fulton County Voters Education at the Piccadilly on Godby Road, where people were being educated on their voter status. And also in the spirit of transparency, we had a wonderful engagement at the Ward Three Town Hall, where residents asked thoughtful questions and shared their ideas that continue to shape our path forward. Last weekend, I also hosted a tour of Ward Three with our legislative and community partners. We rode through the neighborhood highlighting our challenges and celebrating our wins. It was a strong example of collaboration and action and a reminder that our voice is being heard at every level whenever we have our, especially when we have our federal partners to meet us. We had our annual MEAG meeting where we discuss critical infrastructure and energy topics that affect our residents now and in the future. Because we know that a strong utility, a strong utility strategy is the foundation to our thriving city. We also, and lastly, I celebrated new beginnings with my neighbor and also my board appointee, Mr. and Ms. Chase Rumley just had the birth of their daughter. She's five days, well, six days old now. And so I'm, you know, I'm sending a heartfelt congratulations to them. You know, and hopefully this young lady will grow into our community, this community that we're building that is strong in compassion, is filled with opportunity, and that we will continue to show her and others that come into our community what it's like to be a thriving and building community. I want to continue, I want to thank the continued trust, continuing to listen to your voices and partnership with my colleagues and other legislative partners. And together, we are writing our own story, not only in the City of College Park, but in Ward Three, which is transformative. And I am honored to continue to serve in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Councilmember Gay?
Let me just start off, finish the conversation I started, Mayor and colleagues about, I don't know how we got on this subject, but I want to go back to talk about College View Housing Complex. And that conversation came from talking about the Coming Home Union. So in Atlanta, there's about 10 public housing complexes. Capitol Hill, College View, not College View, Capitol Hills, Tech Woods, Centennial Place, Carver Homes, Perry Homes. What do they all have in common? These are all the projects when I grew up, including over here on Medany Street.
Gray Homes?
Grayed. All those complexes, housing complexes, under the first administration of Obama, I know because my frat brother was over hood. Almost three-quarters of a trillion dollars was spent putting people out of public housing into a mixed environment. So now when you go to all these public housing, you're going to see students, you're going to see Ms. Mary, you're going to see people moving back to somewhere. So what is my point? My point is, that's two public housing complexes in the country, since you talk about Juneteenth and national recognition, because it was. There's two, there's two public housing complexes in the country. For some strange reason, they didn't get any of the federal money to become new public housing. And guess which two they are? College Park Housing View and the projects in East Point. Over the whole country, ironically, two public housing complexes. There has never been a conversation that I'm aware of in BIDAR that talks about taking people, fourth, fifth-generation poverty people out of College Housing View, fourth, fifth, sixth-generation people of poverty, and mixing them in a mixed community with PMG. There's no conversations about PMG. All I hear about is legacy owners who are trying to make money by holding out. So you talk about, I'm always about Ward Four. No, 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 that don't have nothing to do with Ward Four. There is no conversation when the mayor picked all those board members. There are no board members that talk about taking fourth, fifth-generation poverty people from College View and putting them in a mixed environment. That's a conversation that y'all need to start having. The second thing I want to say is that I think Jesse A. Dent intersects with Karen, not Arrendale.
You're right.
I changed it from Arrendale to Jesse A. Dent. And the next thing I want to say is, we hire arborists not to cut down trees, we hire arborists to keep from cutting down trees. So at the Botanical Garden, every tree has been tagged by an arborist. The purpose is to save trees, not to cut them down. And the next thing I want to say, and then I got a little video I want to show, is that we don't just need an arborist, we need a tree ordinance. Because College Park don't have a real serious tree ordinance. Now, what we mean by that? We take out trees, but we don't recompense. Atlanta, you recompense. Here, we don't. We just let developers cut down trees. That's where the conversation need to be, not trying to get people contracted to cut trees down. Because we need trees, trees gives us, that's how we breathe. We need trees. We love trees. My daughter's a tree hugger. So I want to, I want to show a clip and then I'm done, that's my time. I'm not seeing this, so I don't know what it's going to show. Someone just sent this to me. So let's see what we got.
Welcome to the July Council Update Room. Welcome to the July Council Update for Ward Four City Councilman Roger Gay. It's been a busy and productive summer in Ward Four. West Point Creek Townhomes celebrated the opening of their community pool for the first time in over a decade with a pool party and barbecue.
Thank you to Councilwoman Gay for sponsoring this great event.
On July 9th, Councilman Gay hosted a meet and greet at the Crystal Gardens Apartment Complex alongside members of our Police and Fire Department. Councilman Gay also attended the annual MEAG Power Meeting, celebrating the organization's 50th anniversary and discussing future energy initiatives. On July 17th, the College Park Public Safety Building was buzzing with excitement as residents gathered for the Ward Four Town Hall meeting. Councilman Gay also discussed House Bill 648 at the meeting, which, if passed in the November 4th election, will exempt all College Park seniors over the age of 55 from paying property taxes. And she was right here in College Park. We're talking about Olympic gold medalist Clarissa Shields. She visited our area here in Ward Four, where Councilman Gay presented her with a special proclamation right here at Charles Phillips Park. And the chess camp also kicked off at Club E with students learning all the right moves from former state chess champion William Remick and other master chess enthusiasts. Renovations are still underway but almost complete at Charles C. Phillips Park, including a new chess patio and enhanced walking paths, sports fields, and gathering spaces. Don't forget to mark your calendars for the annual Ward Four Festival coming up on October 12th at Charles C. Phillips Park. Enjoy live music, food, games, and family-friendly activities. We want to thank you so much for staying connected with us. Be sure to follow us on social media and visit our website for more updates. This is the updates for Councilman Roger Gay. And we're wishing you a wonderful rest of your week. Stay cool, safe, and involved.
All right, so at this, thank you, Councilmember Gay. Is there a motion to enter into executive session to discuss real estate and cybersecurity?
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session for real estate, cybersecurity, and litigation.
Litigation? We don't have litigation listed.
There's an issue.
Okay, all right. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.